Good morning, everyone. It is about eight thirty-five in the morning. This is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. And with the clerk now seated, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I will ask you to take the roll call.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Please pardon my voice. It's been a long month. The spirit is willing, but the flesh is failing. Commissioners Antor, Baker, Breevy, Boujack, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman, LaGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden.
Here.
Chair Stuck.
I'm here.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, you have eighteen members present, three absent. You have a court.
Thank you very much. Now I'll call on myself for the invocation. Please join me in invocation. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that you have instilled systems of physics, chemistry, biology, all that bring order and structure across the span of our universe. And in our society and the course of human events, you have empowered governments to bring order, peace, and justice. We acknowledge that you have gifted us here with the ability, the responsibility, and the opportunity to serve others, and our community, and the cause of justice as we govern here in Kent County. In this season of Thanksgiving, we express our gratitude for the spectrum of blessings that we enjoy. We are grateful for this commission and the dedication, commitment, and sacrifices each of these commissioners make every week as they take up the often thankless job of governing in Kent County. We are grateful for the tireless and skillful work of our administration and all of our Kent County staff who serve our residents every day. We are grateful for the many diverse, complex, and vibrant communities that make up Kent County and make us a rich and rewarding place in which to live and work. We are grateful for the stability, the peace, and the health that you have bestowed on us, and we are grateful for that gift of government. As we approach the end of another term, we ask that you take the many efforts and decisions that we have struggled with over these past years. And though they may be imperfect, use these to secure a strong and healthy county. Continue to grant us wisdom, respect, patience, and perseverance. We pray this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll now move to the Special Order of Business. I am going to move Special Order of Business A to later in the agenda and take that up at the time of Item 12 miscellaneous. Which brings us to Item 5B. And somewhere out there is a prosecutor. Usually when I have to call him up and look him in the eyes, it's not a good thing. But thank you for being here this morning and presenting your annual report.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity. Though I have to dispute you in your prayer, this is not the Thanksgiving season. This is Christmas season. So, you know, Mr. Oliver King is in the festive spirits. Oh, my, I got my suspenders on. So, we're past Thanksgiving now.
You're out of order.
So, I'll be brief. I know you've got a big meeting here today, but in terms of our review, I wanted to start off by, you know, doing these things that, you know, we're showing what we're doing in the community, because I think that's a big thing. For the last one, I got elected in 2016, and I tried to be more forward-facing into the community, because I think that's, you know, important. The traditional idea of a prosecutor is we're just trying to put notches on our belt and throw people in prison, and that's not what we're doing. And so, I've got a selection up here of, you know, things that we are out there in the community doing, be it, you know, Rock the Block, the Kids Food Basket, National Night Out, we do our Victim Impact, Victim Rights thing. We also have the EVAN, Ellen Formador Backpack Event. We're always trying to be out there and be a part of the community to show that we care. That's what we're trying to do in our job. We're not just trying to throw people in prison because we know that's a huge impact on people. But, you know, I'm asking you if you, you know, we've done this for eight years, and we kind of get in your rut in terms of doing the same events all the time. So, if you have stuff in your community, your jurisdiction, let me know about it. I mean, we're not as big as the Sheriff's Department. We can't get out to everything. But I do try and do that, and then try and do different things in getting involved to get our word out there that this is what we do, and this is what we're trying to be a part of in the community. But getting into exactly what we do, Priority Three, excellence in service delivery, and doing some unique things I wanted to focus on that we're really doing in the community right now is our Domestic Violence Court. Our Domestic Violence Court finally started this July. End of July, we finally got it going. We really appreciate the ARPA money that you did provide for that. It's really a unique program. Got the numbers. We're right now in sixty-first, working with sixty-first District Court and sixty-two B District Court. Sixty-first is the city of Grand Rapids. Right now, we've got about six participants in there right now and about thirteen pending review, thirteen pending to get in there. We've reviewed about thirty-seven applications, and that's, well, that's pretty low. You know, this is a treatment court model, though. This is a treatment court. We're only, we're limited to about twenty-five in each court. So, you know, this is, you know, I'm really happy with the numbers that we're getting at this point in time, because, you know, it's something that's growing, and it's not like we're just taking every domestic violence case. We're trying to focus on people that we can have an impact on to change the behavior and really impact that family and that defendant as well as the victim. Sixty-two B, the Kentwood District Court, we've only got three participants, but eleven pending. It's a little bit more difficult, because sixty-first is all one court. We have one probation officer, and she can kind of monitor everything that's going on. We're trying to draw from, you know, it's not only Kentwood Court, but then sixty-third District Court, Walker District Court, and it's hard to coordinate those things. So, it's a little bit further behind, but I think we're moving forward well, and we're having an impact, and we're doing good things. We're going to Safe Haven, the Y. It's a very collaborative effort, so I'm very pleased about how that's going right now. I also want to talk about the Grand Rapids Alternative Correctional Experience, the Grace Program. I know Commissioner Baker attended one of the graduations that we just had. This is really a program, this is something that came up, you know, thought about, but I had Pastor Gaddy with Pilgrim's Rest Baptist Church, who really, you know, provided the ability to do that coming in, and this is a kind of a last chance. I mean, these are kids, juveniles, that are basically looking at the adult system. Now, these aren't the, it's not a murder, it's not a rape, it's not something along those lines, but we've got kids that are doing, you know, eight, ten, twelve, fifteen, breaking and entering, stealing cars, fleeing and looting, stuff like that. We're kind of running out of room, you know, what to do with them in the juvenile system. My next option is put them in the adult system. Well, I think everybody's aware that, okay, we can put them in the adult system, we can lock them up, but is that good long-term for that juvenile? Probably not. They're, you know, it's the Michigan Department of Corrections, but there, you know, there's not a whole lot of correcting. You know, we can house them and stuff like that, but it's not the best idea. So, it's kind of a last chance, intensive therapy, getting these kids in with Pastor Gaddy and his group, trying to work with the families too, because it's not just, you know, usually it's not just the kids, it's something going on with the families. So, we're really trying to holistic approach. It's, once again, a unique program. I think it's a good partnership, but it's something that we're doing to try and give these kids a chance. It's not a hundred percent successful. We had, you know, we've had some success stories. I think you heard about one. She's graduated, she's now a freshman at Ferris State University. Great. We've had some kids that have fallen off, and then I will charge them as well. That's, you know, that's the last option, but we will do it if we have to do it, and so we, it's a program. I know this program's going on for a while, the Youthful Sexual Offender Program. It's how old it is, it's still got, you know, David LaGrand is representative, and that was, what, four years ago now? So, but this is when it started. We probably should update the brochure a little bit. But this is kind of taken from the Adolescent Sex Offender Treatment Program. So, this is something we have for juvenile offenders, and we said, well, why can't we do that for those, the kids who become adults? At the time we did this, when we started, seventeen was an adult. And so, at that point in time, if, you know, you're seventeen, you have sex with your fifteen-year-old girlfriend in high school, that's a fifteen-year felony. And not only is it a fifteen-year felony, it's a mandatory prison sentence. And does that make a whole lot of sense for, you know, I'm not trying to judge morally. I'm not saying it's a great thing, you should have sex when you're seventeen and fifteen, but should somebody go to the Department of Corrections and then be put on the Sex Offender Registry for that, for a completely consensual act? So, we try to do, replicate what's going on in ASOTP and YSOTP for eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds. And it's a unique program, once again. It's getting them treatment, getting them into a programming. One of the key features here is victims have to agree. So, we have to get victim approval. So, it's not just we're ramming this through. The victims, in general, victims are, you know, in a consensual situation. This is a boyfriend, you know, ex-boyfriend, something along those lines, and they're willing to go along with that. And it's not like it's just treatment, we dismiss the charge. We're getting them into treatment, they plead to a sex offense, they go through this program, usually between a year and eighteen months, and then if they successfully complete, we get them off the Sex Offender Registry, we plead seduction. Seduction is debauching an unmarried woman. It's still a crime here in Michigan. It's a five-year felony, but it's not on the Sex Offender Registry. So, it's something, they're still being held accountable. They usually get HYTA, the Home Youth Training Act, so they're getting a conviction, but it's not going on the record. They're getting the treatment, and they're moving forward. We've had about eighty-eight participants in that. We've only had eleven failures, if you will, dropped, you know, we couldn't get them through the program. And I just did the numbers, and we have not had any sex offenders repeat. And I think that's the biggest thing you take away, that that's what they're treating, and they're not reoffending as we're moving forward. I always like, you know, everybody likes dogs, and this is kind of more maybe an internal thing that we're doing. We're bringing in shelter dogs. On Friday, my juvenile APA said, hey, you know, kind of just for mental health for our staff, we deal with some difficult things. And the shelter dogs, if you read what's going on at the shelter, they need respite. These dogs need respite. So, we're bringing these dogs in for a half a day on Friday afternoons. As you can see, it's great for the staff to come over and pet them and have a good time with them, but on the other hand, it's also good for the dogs. They get some a little break, and I think, like, just about, we put some on Facebook, and all the dogs that have come in have been adopted. So, it's kind of a win-win, I think, for everybody here, but it's kind of a fun little program, and obviously, it's very cute, and the dogs come in quite a bit, and it's a nice program. With that being said, I think the high quality of life, one of the things, you know, it's not all, you know, rainbows and unicorns and stuff. One of the biggest things we have to do is we still hold people accountable. I mean, the prosecutor's job, while I say it's not our only job, we have to put people in prison. People do bad things, and we're holding bad people accountable. And you can see some of the headlines over the past year of cases that we have handled, whether it be going to trial or plea bargaining, you know, Brandon Ortiz Vite, that was, that made national news in terms of gotten involved in the presidential election. You know, he pled guilty to a homicide, thirty-nine-year sentence. You know, we have a nice partnership with the Sheriff's Department. Once again, they're switching over to having animal control housed within them. We had a nice partnership with them. We have a woman who has called twenty-seven dogs. We got her a jury conviction on that. So, we're holding people accountable, so it's a blend of both. You do treatment, you try and reform people, but if people need to go to prison, we're doing that, and that's something, one of the important roles we do have in the prosecutor's office. That also leads to more things, and kind of leading into my biggest point here is you see what's going on. It's not just a criminal docket, it's our appeals docket. We have four attorneys who are dealing with appeals. You can see, just year-to-date, they were already over year-to-date, though. When I did these numbers, it was November twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, so they're going to go up, but you can see down, the Court of Appeals filings are up, Michigan Supreme Court filings are up, Circuit Court filings are up. Those are motions in Circuit Court for suppression, you know, bond, whatever it may be. Our District Court filings, that could be an appeal in District Court or just motions in District Court. They're all up. So, we're seeing a lot more work for our appellate staff for a variety of reasons, but, you know, this is, it's not like our work is going away. We're doing everything we can to stay on top of it. I always talk about our family law. A lot of people aren't aware of our family law division is, you know, we're responsible for setting up child support, you know, getting a non-custodial parent, getting a DNA test, and then setting a child support based on state guidelines. As you can see, we're one of the top performing counties in the state in terms of whether it be getting the, you know, trying to reach out to non-custodial parent, trying to see if we can get them, you know, get them in there, processing reports from the Office of Child Support we've worked with. I think one of the new things we're doing with the DHHS and OCS, we're setting up navigators. I think there's one in Family Promise and the Black Impact Collaborative, navigators, trying to, you know, the child support process isn't easy, it's confusing, you know, trying to get people, it's a pilot project to see how we can help that, help them get through, because it's important, I think it's, once again, a crime prevention thing. If you get the kids the support they need, and also the fathers, usually it's fathers that are non-custodial, get them involved in the kid's life, there's a lot better chance of success down the road. So, I think that, you know, this is part of the criminal, trying to prevent crime, is to get the kids the support, get them that relationship with the dad, and so I think we're doing a good job on staying on top of that. I've never really talked about this, but we also have a contract with DHHS, you know, we terminate parental rights. We don't want to, it's not something we like to do, but it's something, sometimes we have to do. And you can see on the right, there's some numbers there in terms of just, you know, in twenty-twenty-three, the complaints, the investigations. Where our office is all involved in that. About two and a half attorneys, that primarily, that's their job, is in DHHS cases, and trying to terminate parental rights, and that's not going away either, it's not reducing. And you can see on the left, you know, we are working with the courts in terms of rapid reunification. Kids in foster care, that's tough. We actually have our Christmas party with Casa, we have toys for Casa, because court has appointed special advocates. They are appointed for that kid in foster care, and they have, they bring toys and stuff for their kids, and so we're trying to work with them. But this court is trying to improve that process. It can be, the longer that goes along, it's harder on the family, harder on the kid. So, we're trying to have a rapid reunification that we're working on with the courts in that aspect. All this takes good employees, and I think we have very good employees. You have recognized these employees, Elizabeth Bartlett and Melissa Dennison are two, our victim advocate and one of our attorneys, who the last two courts, we've had, you know, recognition by this body for their excellence in service. I also want to mention Tracy Brower, who was one of the child support assistants in the family division. She was recognized statewide as Pam Attorney of the Year in twenty-twenty-four. We need good people to do these jobs, because it's a big job, which leads me to the challenges that I want to bring to your attention, and staffing is number one on that issue. Pretty much focus on that primarily, because, you know, digital evidence is something, and I appreciate, we got a capital improvement project from you guys last year, so we're going to be doing that, using that for digital evidence. But, you know, the staffing, to have the people to run the juvenile stuff is the biggest thing. And what does that mean? I've always said, you know, this is the, this goes to the defender's office. You just incorporated the defender's office, and I'm not criticizing, you know, I said I don't have a dog in that hunt, but when you look at it, this is the Office of the Defender, you've got thirty-seven assistant defenders now that are hired by the county. Well, if you look at it, well, we have thirty-seven APAs, but there's a big difference here, because when you take that, we have four families. The family child support division has four attorneys during that work, okay? Office of the Defender doesn't have that. We have seven juvenile attorneys. Office of the Defender isn't handling any juvenile cases, okay? So, and then we have our four appeals. Office of the Defender that you hired, they, Sado, State Appellate Defender's Office, has those cases, they're doing appeals. When you look at criminal to criminal, it's thirty-seven, twenty-one, all right? And so, that was always my thing, is I just looking for equity. And one of the things I know, and I've talked with Al about this, and it's not like you're ignoring that, but this is something, apples to apples, they outnumber us right now, and they're getting paid more, about a thousand dollars. And once again, they're aware of that, it's about a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars when you look at it. And so, that's a big thing for my office in terms of, you know, they're, hey, why are they getting paid more for doing less cases? And why are they doing less cases is because, okay, about seven thousand, we're just looking at criminal, not even, you know, juvenile's a whole different case, though. Seven thousand criminal cases, though, just overcame into our office last year, we handle every single one of those cases. We are responsible for every single one of those cases. The defender's office isn't. People hire their own attorneys. People don't get attorneys for a lot of those misdemeanors. So, they have a lesser caseload, and I don't have the numbers, the exact numbers of what those are, but they're handling less cases. So, in terms of, you know, more attorneys, less cases, we need to have some equity. Once again, for your, as a body, for advocacy purposes, and Commissioner Wooden, as you move into your new role in the state, he'll be talking to you, we got state money. We got state money coming in, we got approved for state money last year, we hope that's continuing, that's going to allow me to hire new attorneys that doesn't fall on the county budget, but we need that state money to continue. And that's, you know, fifteen different counties got that, but that's something, if you're looking for somebody to advocate to, to keep that money coming, so we can have equity, but it doesn't impact the county budget. But, you know, and just going in, it's not just seven thousand cases, too. When you look at it, there's five thousand cases we have to review that don't go to the defender's office as well. And so, I think there's also this, you know, MIDC, the Michigan Individual Defense Council has, you know, they have a certain number of cases they're supposed to have for defender's offices, and while we don't have that. Well, just going, Elizabeth Bartlett, who got the award, this is the Shannon Gay trial. This was the gymnast that we convicted of multiple CSC offenses for abusing gymnasts years ago, but this just gives you an idea, you know, reviewing a police report, you know, what was that, five hundred and fifty pages? She basically, you know, read "War and Peace" before she even charged it, okay? And then charging it, trying to coordinate with fourteen different witnesses, fourteen different victims. And I hear, well, you know, the defender's office has to meet with the defenders, their clients. We have to meet with the victims, we have to coordinate with fourteen victims in terms of, you know, and they all have different wishes, different thoughts, how things should go, calling all these witnesses, we have, you know, over eighteen hundred pieces of evidence we have to share with the defense, and we put that on in court. And you can see the differences, we called twenty-eight witnesses, two hundred and seventy-one exhibits, the defense did zero. And I'm not criticizing the defense, that's usually how it goes. It's just generally that how it goes, and that's the, not saying the defense didn't do their job. In most cases, you know, one of the biggest things, problems we have as prosecutors, we don't cross-examine, because the defense doesn't call witnesses. So, there's a lot more going on in the prosecutor's office, and, you know, we're just looking for equity, and that's the biggest thing, if there's any message, is, you know, equal. And whether that comes from state, or if we don't get the state money, I'm going to be coming to you saying, hey, I mean, I already said, we're going to need about ten to eleven more APAs with this defender's office going through, that's going to be the biggest thing for us. So, sped through that pretty fast. I'm open to any questions, though.
You did do that fast, thank you. All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Chris, I don't know if you remember, about sixteen years ago, I first met you, I noticed that you were at everything. And sixteen years later, you're still showing up for everything. I don't know if you get paid mileage, probably not, but you've always been that guy, and sometimes people take it easy when they get in your position, don't necessarily do the things that they say they're going to do, but you've always showed up, and I always appreciate that.
Thank you.
Also, I appreciate all your support for the Gold Star families in the area, veterans, police, first responders, but it's been a pleasure working with you, and I know we don't always agree on everything, but you show up and you face everybody, whether it's good or bad, you look them in the eye, and I've always appreciated that, both of you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, and thank you especially for talking about the Domestic Violence Court and the Sex Offender Treatment Courts. I really appreciate your support for those, because it wouldn't happen without you and the support of your office. And I know that people involved in the Domestic Violence Court are so pleased to have it and have the opportunity of breaking some of these cycles. You know, a lot of these offenders come from a background of violence, and so the opportunity to get to the bottom of those problems is just, it's rare, and I really thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on what you were saying. I think that it's been really important to get to know that your work, and I, when I left the Grand Rapids Public Schools to come here, finding ways to work with youth who were engaged in not going in the right direction. I got to know a lot of organizations on the southeast side that work to help youth, and they all work with you. And that's how I got to know them, that's how I got to know you. Commissioner LaGrand and I are working on another community initiative with you to support, and I think it's really important that people know that. I just want to really reiterate the work that you did to help that young woman who went to Grace through Pastor Gaddy's program and is now at Ferris, that the public could have been investing in her being in the prison system, and now they're investing in her getting a college degree. That's remarkable, and it's a work that we kind of do, and that just shows that there's a public benefit to justice and caring in the community. I really appreciate your engagement. I say the same about the Sheriff's engagement. When I go to places to talk to people who are concerned about what's happening in the community, concerned about young people, they're working with you, and I appreciate that.
I try to, thank you.
Commissioner Green, excuse me, Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I guess, to piggyback on what Commissioner Antor said, just to really commend you for your work, Chris, probably one of the hardest working people I know in government at any level. I was telling somebody else the other day, talking about you, that there's probably not enough money in the world to pay me to want to do the job that you do. So, thank you for doing it, for working as hard as you do at it, and for all the innovations you're doing in your department, kind of above and beyond the narrow scope of the law in order to, you know, make things better than what you're obligated to do. So, just thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I always smile when I see you out in the public, because you are in every community. You break the stereotype for Kent County, and I don't know if you realize that. We were at the safe pitch, and these, I don't want to call them gang banger kind of people, you know, but they came up to you, and they hugged you, and you hugged them, and they were talking about some of their, you know, activities that were positive activities. So, they call themselves a gang, so that's why I say it like that. But you don't back down, and we appreciate that in Kent County. You're strong, you make us look good, but you are tough on crime, and you're looking for ways to make sure that our community thrives together, because when people are in situations, sometimes they're young and, you know, not as wise, and sometimes they are, you know, full of bad things, put it that way. We appreciate you, and we want you to know that we see you all out and about, and even in our black communities, you're very strong and very respected. I do have a question that I'd like to ask. I'd like to ask, what are some of the reasons that people are failing out of those programs? It doesn't sound like there's a lot, but what would be some of the reasons?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, going to the Grace Program specifically, I mean, these are, these are kids, it's hard to break habits, you know, just like, you know, you do in your own life, you know, trying to, you know, quit smoking, stop eating sweets, whatever it is, and they get into, you know, criminal habits, if you will, and it's the environment, where they're coming from, you know, going back to the same groups that have bad influences. I think, you know, and we'll see that, the kids that graduate, we had just, we had like three that graduated with outstanding, you know, saw them at the graduation, it was, they're on the right path, and then they get out of that structure, and it's hard to, you know, they go back into the same, and that's why I think Pastor Gaddy is really looking at, how do you impact the family now? It's not just the kid, you got to get in the family and change the family too. So, just getting in the back in those bad situations again, and you fall into the same bad habits, and, you know, it's no different than anybody else.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Prosecutors, good to see you. I did have a couple of questions, specifically when it comes to the challenges that you mentioned, staffing, digital evidence, juvenile system. You're alluding a lot to funding, where that funding is coming from, and the potential to not have that burden be placed only on the people of Kent County. And given the fact that our state has a flat income tax system where people, regardless of how much income they have, pay the same tax rate, do you think that changing that system to a system where the more money you make, the more taxes you pay, would help alleviate some of those concerns and some of those crimes?
Whether, you know, I don't know if the tax system, you know, it's, what the state's spending money on as well, because right now, if you look at MIDC, the MIDC funding, they get almost, I think it was three hundred and eighty million from the MIDC, and we were lucky this year to get fifteen. So, you know, it's not just the money coming in, it's how you spend the money that's already in there. So, I don't say, you know, whether increasing tax or what taxes are, I think it's, you got to make priorities and priorities at the state level and how you're going to spend the money, and whether, how that happens. A lot of the juvenile stuff, I mean, a lot of the juvenile stuff, we're having the challenges, because state law is being changed and lancing in terms of what we can do with juveniles, and that's going to fall on how do we manage this locally. and that's gonna fall on how do we manage this locally. We're not gonna have, there's only two juvenile detentions, and it's a whole different, you know, conversation in terms of sending people to juvenile detention isn't always the answer, but it's very hard, because there's only two facilities, and so that puts a lot more strain on the county, and does that mean spending money? No, because, you know, Pastor, I'm not, we're not paying Pastor Gaddy, this is a nonprofit, but working with them and trying to encourage what they're doing on their own, and there's a lot of groups out there that are doing stuff on their own, that doesn't necessarily mean the county has to do it, but maybe partnering with them and helping them in their journey.
That's a good point. It's not just about the money coming in, but how it's being spent. And to that point, one of your slides, I think, had the word root cause, or the phrase root cause in them. And you mentioned the juvenile system, and really the system as a whole, people committing crimes. With that, and focusing on root causes, do you, what types of things do you think, then, that the money should be spent on to avoid not just juveniles, but people in general from going into the system?
Right, you know, you look at the socioeconomic, you know, and I talk, you know, talking with some of these groups, and, you know, you go in there, and there's a hopelessness. There's a hopelessness, they don't have the American dream, they're not gonna get a job, they're not gonna be able to buy a house. So, you know, getting into, you know, good education, you know, the schools, making sure they get good education, having good jobs, you know, that's what is one of the greatest crime preventions there is, which I don't have a ton of control on, but to encourage that sort of, you know, being able to have a job and being able, a good education to get that job, there's employers out there that are dying for people to employ that show up on time and do the work, and they can't get them, and there's a bunch of juveniles that, just getting them trained, you know, I know one of the programs, I'm trying to think what it was, you know, they just mentor people to get up on time and get to work on time, you know, transportation, getting them there, and just getting them into that habit, going to my point, getting them in that habit, that's a huge thing, but if you don't have that habit, you can have all these, you know, you can have jobs, but if they're not going there, they're not educated to do them, that's a big issue.
Right. So it sounds like you're saying things like guaranteed access to healthcare, to education, housing, a safe and clean and healthy environment, things like that would be, would do a lot more to impact the long-term root causes of these. Thank you. And I'm curious about how, you mentioned something along the lines of not everybody goes through the special courts or the programs, how do you determine who does and who doesn't?
I mean, every court's different, every court has different criteria, you know, a task court, there's mental health, so you have to have certain mental health things, you know, for the Domestic Violence Court, we decided not, you know, we're not doing Domestic Violence Thirds. You think, well, Domestic Violence Thirds, but, you know, once you gain the habit, some of these, you know, some of these, you know, a batter is, you know, we've got two convictions, there's usually probably thirty other times they've battered their spouse, you're not gonna break that cycle by the DV Thirds. So we're trying to look at maybe a DV Second, you know, getting involved there, or assault strangulation, which is, you know, you're taking it maybe a first time, but if you're taking it to the next level, Domestic Violence is simply a hit, push, or shove, but if you're choking your partner, and it's an intimate partner, if you're choking your partner, that's taking it to a different level, how do we intervene in there, because we don't want somebody to die and something like that? So it's, you know, various criteria, but that's what we're looking specifically in Domestic Violence Court, is how do we really catch people before they get into those really bad habits that we're not gonna be able to break?
Yeah. Thank you. And lastly, earlier this week, the Michigan Supreme Court rejected an appeal by the former police officer who killed Patrick Leoya. That family has been waiting for justice for over two years now. I want to thank you for your work on that case, hopefully now that, I believe, the last appeal hopefully has been.
There's no such thing as the last appeal.
Yes, well, for now, I suppose. I hope that the case can move along more quickly than it has been, and again, thank you for that work. This is my last meeting, and as I mentioned earlier, I look forward to connecting with you after the new year to see, to talk a little bit more about what systemic changes need to happen to make your job easier and our community safer.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. DeBoer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prosecutor, I just wanted to say we're very blessed to have you, and we're very thankful for you here in Kent County.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions, thank you again, Mr. Prosecutor Chris, I appreciate you being here and everything you and your department do.
Thank you.
So I thought I had a brilliant idea of moving the Commissioner acknowledgement to the end of the agenda, and I'm now realizing we probably have some family members here to observe that, and that was probably not fair to them, because they saw the agenda and anticipated it would be different. So if you allow me a little flexibility to undo myself and go back to the original agendas call, and we will now ask a number of our Commissioners to join me and Al at the podium. We do have five of our Commissioners who will be leaving us at the end of the year. That is a lot of drain power to leave and lose in one swoop, so we certainly want to spend some time to just acknowledge you for your service. Please join me, Commissioners Diaz, Mr. Baker, Mr. Wooden, Commissioner Breavy, and Antor. Thank you for coming back, by the way. So we have these long proclamations, but I'm not gonna read them, because then we would be here too long. But I would like to present a proclamation to each of our retiring, departing Commissioners, and I will start with Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Diaz has only served one term, but he has been an individual who brings an important perspective and ideas to this board, and I will say that I think he is the one Commissioner who has the most referrals to Robert's rules of any other Commissioner. So congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for yours as well. I know we've not been able to work with you as long as we perhaps would have enjoyed, but so be it, that's the way it goes. We are always enjoying the kind of perspective and wisdom that you bring to every debate that we have, and I know that you have been involved in this community for many years before you came here. I have no doubt you'll continue to be involved in the community hereafter, and we are blessed by having you here while you were here. So thank you so much for your service. Commissioner Wooden.
So Commissioner Wooden and I did the ARPA battles, you might recall those, for many, many months, and I learned through that to respect, to honor his ideas, his perspectives, and really, while we are both Preachers' Kids, we do have our political roots and different ground, but I really respect what you were able to do on behalf of the community and on behalf of this body, and I'm looking forward to what you're gonna be able to do in your next stage. Thank you so much for your service.
Commissioner Breavy. You and I came in together, right, ten years ago, and we both kind of had those starry-eyed looks as we thought we knew what we were doing, and learned very quickly, as most of us do, that we don't until we get here, but you have learned so quickly, and you have been such an asset to this board and to me as my Vice Chair for two years. There is not a thing I can think that I ever asked you to do, you didn't do, and did very well professionally, and I just could not have had a better person at my side during the course of these years, and you will be missed at this board. So we wish you all the well, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Antor. When we came in, you were already here, seasoned. I think you've been here sixteen years, so one of the longest-standing Commissioners in this board. You always bring a perspective, a passion, particularly a passion for veterans issues. It's enjoyable as I sit here at the center, I always know when I look to my right, I can count on you, and I look to my left, I can count on Commissioner Diaz, to make sure we have the full spectrum represented at this table. It has been a joy to work with you over these years, and I certainly wish you all the best as you go forward. Thank you for your service. There's always Preachers' involved.
Yes. Commissioner Breavy should be in the middle. I should be over there.
And to continue the pattern, I'm also going to flip-flop eight A and eight B. We're not there yet, but just so you know. Now, we're up to public comment, this is our first opportunity for public comment, if there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the board on matters that are on the agenda only at this time, there's a second opportunity to identify and talk to us about general jurisdictional matters, but this is for agenda items only. If you wish to do so, you will please identify yourself by name, your address, and you will have up to three minutes. I believe we used a sign-in card this time, so I will go through the sign-ups first, and then at the end of that, if anyone else still wishes to address us, you may do so then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Up first with card number one, Janet Zahn. On deck is number two, Amy Hinman.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Janet Zahn. I live at 222 Richards Avenue Northwest. I am a neighbor of the zoo, by a few blocks. Here to speak just briefly about two things, though, thinking I was only talking about the zoo, but it turns out when I looked at the agenda, I also would like to make a comment briefly about the choice of Live Nation as going into a long-term contract with an organization with a horrible reputation and which is also being sued by the government as a monopoly. It feels like a bad choice there. No more said. But with regard to the zoo, I come as a neighbor, but also as a co-chair of the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition, so I'm looking at the environmental justice issues around the zoo's plans for adding to its parking situation, and knowing that every time we reduce green space instead of adding to it in our community, we are adding to the burden of environmental justice, and we spend a lot of money and a lot of time adding trees and looking for ways to make this a greener city. The zoo has a long reputation of doing a lot of things really well in terms of sustainability and the environment. They've changed many of the animals' habitats to be much more natural, they have reduced the use of water and pesticides, and use a lot of mostly native plants in the habitats in the areas surrounding the habitats. Many things are doing very well, but when it comes to this new plan for how they're gonna accommodate the zoo's growth, it feels like they've not done things very well at all. I sent an email last night, and for those of you whose emails don't get blocked, you probably had a chance to read that from me, and I have since received additional information that I felt I wanted to adapt my comments there. It feels like the newest iteration of the plan is perhaps the best we can do right now. I appreciate all the work that's been done by members of the Commission to hold the zoo accountable to doing things in a better way. I guess the one thing I would say is, I think there's a big systemic problem with the zoo in terms of its structure, how it operates, and it's not doing a good job of interacting with the community who is impacted by it, and spending too much of its effort looking at the bottom line and how it can just grow, grow, grow. So I think that all efforts should be made to improve the infrastructure of how the zoo operates, how it can account to the county and the relationship with the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Amy Hinman. On deck, card number three, Andrew Sisson.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's been a minute. My name is Amy Hinman. I live at 201 Ives, and I'm a neighbor to both the park and the zoo. You should have received my public comment yesterday regarding the zoo's master plan, but I wanted to use this time very briefly to offer my gratitude to this Commission for listening to our concerns and considering them with so much care. I know your roles are complex, that you see things that we don't, and you're often forced to make difficult decisions that might be unpopular. Your thoughtfulness on this matter has not gone unnoticed. I specifically would like to thank Commissioners McLeod, Pakla, Baker, Wooden, Oliver King, DeBoer, and Diaz for speaking with us, working with us, and advocating for us. We're in your debt. Thank you to Commissioner Hennessy, oh, I'm not crying, for your heartfelt representation and commitment to replying to every single email, even the form emails. I'm so grateful to be your constituent. Finally, County Administrator Vanderberg and Josh Spencer, thank you for meeting with our group of neighbors and for treating us with respect, even in difficult moments. I recognize and celebrate the progress that we've made in the last fourteen months. All we can do is take the next best step, and we'll be here for whatever comes next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Sisson. On deck, card number four, Paul DeBoer.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Sisson, and I'm at 229 Richards Avenue Southwest. I'm a lifelong Kent County resident, and I've lived next to the zoo for over a decade. I'm here this morning to urge a vote no on the resolution to approve the zoo's master plan, specifically as it pertains to the parking, the expansion of the parking facilities onto the existing park green space. I would like to draw this Commission's attention to its own newly adopted strategic plan and its misalignment to the zoo's plan, and how the zoo's negligence around this entire process is the reason why we're here today. At its core, this plan is a gross, uninformed attempt at a land grab that will destroy century-old trees and pave over our community's green space without having transparently done the due diligence to support the claims that it's even necessary. I would like to point out that the data analysis that we, with the neighbors, the Save John Ball Park, have presented in the request to reject the parking expansion suggests that the current parking capacity is sufficient to accommodate the zoo's current and projected attendance for years to come, and that inconsistencies within the numbers that the zoo has shared to the community provide serious doubt to materials that they present that it is necessary. As a business analyst myself, I'm confused at how this organization of this size has been allowed to present a plan before this body without properly conducting a parking and traffic study that would even remotely justify the incredible financial expenditure. The fact that community members are the ones providing this data to you today shows that the priorities of the zoo's leadership have been neglectful in its responsibilities to this body and community members, focused on their bottom line and legacy. Please do not reward such poorly-led process with a yes vote. Additionally, I would like to remind you of the freshly adopted strategic plan, where you emphasize the importance of preserving and enhancing our natural environment. It calls for the protection of open spaces and the promotion of sustainable development. Paving over existing green space for additional parking contradicts these principles. In your strategic plan, in your SWOT analysis specifically, you outlined threats that you need to be aware of in moving forward with this plan, valuing economic development over the provision of services for people and losing or limiting services to the poor. And while I would never say that the Lower West Side is poor, its residents have historically been disenfranchised and marginalized, particularly around development in the name of community progress. By approving this master plan, you would be voting directly against your own acknowledged threats, chipping away at the integrity of this body's mission to be responsible in budgeting, thoughtful in planning, and having the commitment to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community.
Thank you.
Next, Paul DeBoer, and on deck, we have card number five, Cindy DeBoer.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Paul DeBoer. I live at 114 Valley Avenue Southwest, and I'm a partner at DeBoer, Goodatt, Kaler, and Tuttle CPAs, located in West Fulton, and I'm a member of the West Fulton Business Association. Thank you for serving our community and representing the residents of Kent County. I'm respectfully requesting that you vote no on the 2025 John Ball Zoo Master Plan as proposed, based on the conservation of park space for our city, financial considerations, and a seemingly lack of effective communication. We can agree that the projected cost of $300 million using public and donated funds is significant and should be part of a plan that has been carefully researched, compiled, and communicated to all stakeholders, but yet there appears to be a lack of understanding and some surprise after its recent public announcement. As neighbors, we want to be excited about new exhibits and expansion, but we are surprised, concerned, and saddened by the costs that only we absorb in the form of surrendered park space that has existed for decades and is regularly used by residents and wildlife. This project has not been communicated well to the John Ball neighbors. The master plan indicates that the project includes $10 million for the reconfiguration and expansion of the east parking lot, which will add 250 additional spaces. This cost seems high, based on published average cost of parking services. In addition, the plan to invest these funds during Phase One of a multi-year project seems financially questionable. This reconfiguration doesn't need to happen this early in the project, if at all. Lastly, the master plan also mentions a 2,000-space parking deck in the future. Should we consider that parking deck now rather than later? Would the additional 250 spaces be unnecessary? Could the $10 million currently earmarked for the east parking lot be applied to this permanent, long-term solution instead, and at the same time satisfy the needs of all stakeholders? To conclude, it seems like the pace of this project has accelerated recently, and there are still questions, misunderstandings, and undercommunicated components of this master plan, which could have negative implications to the long-term relationship between the community and the zoo. With some additional efforts, it is possible and quite probable that the county, zoo, and community could find reasonable solutions where we, the neighbors, could embrace and welcome the new John Ball Zoo and its visitors. I respectfully ask you to take the time to find these solutions for the welfare of all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Cindy DeBoer. On deck, card number six, Noel Jacobs.
Good morning. Good morning. Hi, Commissioners. My name is Cindy DeBoer, and I, too, live at 114 Valley. When I stood in this exact spot just a month ago, I never imagined the zoo could submit an even more aggressive proposal and snub their neighbors even more profoundly, but here we are. Today, I have three points, and the first point is ethics. The zoo is entirely ignoring its vows made to the Kent County voters who passed our current operating millage in 2016. The zoo attached three dots. The zoo attached three documents to that millage proposal, all repeatedly ensuring increased funding would support the zoo and park. Here's a quote from Mr. D'Renzo. "This millage would allow the zoo to improve and enhance existing infrastructure in the park, including park entry, playground, picnic areas, and park amenities to better serve families." Voters were led to believe that millage included the preservation of John Ball Park, and to that end, you Commissioners have a moral and ethical responsibility to ensure the zoo uses taxpayer funds to preserve and improve the park for public use. Point two is trust. Upon paving the 12 acres off Butterworth, the zoo promised the gravel overflow lot would be returned to a lush green field and protected in perpetuity. That never happened, and now the zoo denies ever making those promises. Community trust has been broken, and we won't believe anything the zoo says anymore. We deserve a guaranteed concrete timeline that green space will be restored to usable park space. Our activist group is not just a small bunch of angry neighbors, and weighing our input similarly to other Kent County residents is an egregious false equivalence. This new master plan will so profoundly affect the lives and well-being of Westsiders, it's like giving or withholding something as vital as water. For other county residents, it's more like giving or withholding a pair of slippers worn once or twice a year. Point three is mental health. I'm a psychiatric nurse with a bachelor's in health science and graduate certificate in holistic health. I coach my patients in using healthy coping skills to combat depression, anxiety, anger, and hopelessness. Mental health studies often prioritize the coping skill of getting outside and connecting with nature. Due to the dense housing and high-volume rental properties, most Westside residents have little to no yard, and upon losing a park, they lose all access to the crucial, life-giving asset of green space and nature. This master plan robs that asset from Westsiders, and make no mistake, it will take a toll on our collective mental health. As a Christian, I believe with all that's in me that people always matter more than money and things. I urge you to stand by that same guiding principle and vote for the people of the West Side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Noel Jacobs on deck, Jacob Baker, card number seven.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. My name is Noel Jacobs. I live at 100 Valley Avenue Southwest, right in front of the park. I'm a pastor with Campus Ministry at Grand Valley State University, so I love our students in our area very much, and I firsthand witnessed the positive impacts that this park has had on my students, our neighborhood, and the wider community. This park is more than just a recreational area. It's a space of connection, reflection, community building, and a place that provides a sense of home to students in an urban area. Many of the college students that live in Grand Rapids and attend GVSU and GRCC live on the west side of Grand Rapids, with a lot of the rental properties clustered in the John Ball neighborhood. I chose to move to this neighborhood because God gave me a dream to move there, and I responded in obedience, because it's a space to live out my passion of creating community among students and our neighbors. For many budget-conscious students, this park is one of the few places they can go for free, whether for recreation, connection, or as a retreat from the pressures of school, which they so deeply feel. This park is a mental health retreat center right on the west side, and it's a gift. It's the central gathering space for our neighborhood. It serves as a bridge between students and neighbors, and I know there's been tensions between that and bridges our wider community. The park is a vital space for unification of our neighborhood and the diversity of its residents. I have the privilege of witnessing this when I walk out of my house, cross the street, and enter sacred space where people flourish. Free community building events, pickup ultimate frisbee, cheering on youth soccer games, countless mentorship conversations under the tall trees at the picnic tables, running in the field to simply feel the presence of God in nature amidst the chaos of life. These are the daily joys I've experienced in this park. But even since the gravel parking lot and road have been added, all of these things that we enjoy have dwindled. No more neighborhood games of ultimate frisbee or Bible studies on blankets in the picnic tables. The dirt parking lot, noise, and bustle have begun to take over, and it's no longer the peaceful sanctuary that it once was, and that breaks my heart. I wrote a 2023 article from the U.S. Surgeon General, which stated that loneliness has reached epidemic levels in our culture, and I see this play out in the lives of college students every single day when I meet with them. But I've also witnessed the miraculous positive effects that this park has had on their lives. It's transformed their loneliness into joy, connection, and flourishing, and this park is a treasure not just for students but all who live in the neighborhood. So I urge you to carefully consider the real and negative implications of the zoo's 2025 master plan on our community. I do believe that there is a better way forward to better accommodate both attendees at the zoo and the residents, and especially the students who benefit from this park. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Next, Jacob Baker on deck, card number eight, Jessica Cooney Davis.
Good morning.
If you'll just pass those over to the clerk instead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Tried to save time, bad idea.
So do I. Sometimes it just doesn't work for you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Jake Baker. I live at 59 Richards Avenue Northwest. I'm a father of three, an infectious disease physician and researcher, and also a resident of the John Ball neighborhood. I'd like to emphasize the senseless nature of the zoo's request for additional parking and ask that the county say no to the 2025 John Ball Zoo master plan because of the proposed parking expansion. My family lives less than a block from John Ball Zoo. We saw the toll firsthand that the overflow parking took on the green space where our kids used to play, now covered with gravel, stretches, compacted earth. So when I, while I was saddened when the 12-acre parking lot expansion happened on the west side of the park, intuitively, I could understand that this was, that this made sense. It was a step to meet parking demand for the zoo. It was a loss for our neighborhood, but at least it met a clear need for the zoo. When I first read the 25, 25 master plan, there was nothing intuitive about the additional parking expansion. How could the zoo need more parking still? And so it just didn't make sense. So being a researcher by training, I decided to do some math, calculating parking need from the zoo's attendance figures. With the help of some neighbors, we shared these numbers with the Board of Commissioners. I understand that the zoo has since then also presented alternative estimates of parking need based on their own modeling from 2017. I did my best to again evaluate their claimed parking needs and still find notable flaws with their latest methodology. I've summarized my concerns on the papers I'm sending around right now. I'd be happy to comment further on the mathematical issues with the zoo's modeling, but unfortunately, that doesn't fit in the minute I have left. The short version of it is that the zoo continues to overestimate parking need by assuming, by, by overinflating general attendance numbers, it seems, as well as overestimating parking need by assuming low efficiency of parking lot use. Not to mention, this modeling was done seven or eight years ago already and may not even be pertinent, and it is in conflict with their own 2015 parking estimates. If the zoo was truly interested in understanding parking need, they would perform an objective party parking utilization study instead of relying on theoretical modeling prone to miscalculation. The zoo is asking the county to agree to irreversible and harmful changes to our community without objectively demonstrating, demonstrating necessity. Approving an unjustified, unresearched, $10 million parking expansion that isn't needed but clearly harmed our community, that's just irresponsible. It lacks common sense. There's no rush to move on parking expansion now. We have time to see how the 900-spot parking meet lot currently available meets the needs of the zoo and to find better long-term parking solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jessica Cooney Davis on deck, card number nine, Anna Blake.
I can imagine some small kids would be too nervous to come up, so they're in the other room, but they need science. Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for being here in the snow and the weather, and thank you to those of you who have really worked to listen to us. My name is Jessica Cooney Davis, and my family and I live on Valley Avenue Southwest across from John Ball Park. As longtime zoo members, we are asking for the county to reject the 2025 John Ball Zoo master plan and its proposed parking expansion. If we can zoom out for a moment, we were speaking about this same green space earlier this year. We just lost 12 acres of park to pavement, and we were told that this would meet parking demands. So I'm trying to understand how we are all back here again. The zoo's CEO previously stood in this room and assured us of fully restored fields, berms to separate cars from green spaces, and protection against future encroachment. Last year during the zoo's so-called community engagement sessions, posters lined the walls and displayed promises of safeguarding this space for generations. Despite clearly understanding the value of this area to our neighborhood, the zoo, without public notice, quietly submitted a master plan that actively works to destroy the park while claiming the land for their own. If the zoo no longer acknowledges this as a public park, how can they justify receiving taxpayer dollars through the 2016 millage? That millage was intended to improve the park for public use, and yet in eight years, we haven't seen evidence of those funds benefiting this space. It's not lost on our children when playgrounds and trees are replaced by parking lots, especially when we as parents can't provide justification as to why. We deserve to be active participants in this process and need to be included in a meaningful way. Our voices represent generations of care and commitment to this space. Legally and historically, this space is undeniably a park upheld by people and protected by clear documentation. It's time to treat it as such. I feel it's essential to publicly acknowledge the incredible advocacy efforts by the Kent County residents who have shared their love for this park. From children sending over 250 heartfelt postcards to nearly 2,000 individuals signing petitions and writing emails, the community's stance on this issue is clear. This park is more than just a neighborhood treasure. It's a well-loved space by families and visitors across the region. We're speaking out not just on behalf of our neighborhood. We're speaking as people who witness firsthand how heavily this park is used and how bustling and joyful a space it is for all who come. We are the experts who are getting overlooked when it comes to quantifying the value of this incredible community asset. The perspective should never be that we are asking for too much green space. This green space already exists. We need to be speaking about this as something we are not willing to lose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Anna Blake, and on deck, card number 10, Monica Wilson.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Anna Blake, and I live at two three five Richards Avenue Southwest, less than a block from the zoo, where we home educate our kids. When my family and I moved to the neighborhood six years ago, we were thrilled to live close to the zoo and the green space around it. Our four kids love visiting the animals, and we use the park for walks, for soccer, for nature hikes through the trees. We love the zoo, and we vote, and we love the green space. Please vote no on this plan, and that presents a plan, and please ask the zoo for a new plan that permanently protects the remaining green space. Last year, when I attended the zoo's community meetings for the 2023 amendment, zoo officials told me that cars would no longer park in the field, and the space would be turned back into a field for the community. Please hold them to their own promises and protect the field along Valley. This is also time-sensitive. My kids are six, four, two, and six months. We need green space back, free of cars, sooner rather than later. In 10 years, it will be too late for my kids. Their, this plan affects their growing-up years and where they will explore the natural world. The zoo's mission is to inspire their community to be actively engaged in the conservation of wildlife and our natural world. This green space right across from my street is where my kids will learn and learn through play and exploration, as kids do best, how to marvelot, honor, and steward their natural environment. Please encourage the zoo to remove cars from the field as soon as possible and protect all remaining green space. We've already lost so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Monica Wilson on deck, card number 11, Emma Garcia.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Monica Wilson. My family and I live at 68 Richards Avenue Northwest. We've been there since 2017. We're less than a five-minute walk from the zoo. I'm a mother of two young boys. I'm a marriage and family therapist and a homeschooling parent. My family deeply values the zoo, the playgrounds, and the green spaces surrounding it. I'm here to ask all of you to vote no on the zoo's 2025 master plan. I choose to practice therapy because I regularly get to see the importance and impact of the work that I do. I have seen and believe in the impact that even one healthy marriage in a community can have. My work, though, is only one small piece of the larger story of each person's or family's life. The quality of a person's environment is essential to well-being. Numerous studies have shown a strong positive correlation between access to green space and improved mental health. These studies indicate that adults, teens, and children living in areas with more green spaces tend to experience lower levels of isolation, stress, depression, and anxiety. Human bodies need to be in nature. We have small backyards on the west side. This is not a difficult argument to make, as we've all experienced this. Nature is restorative. Green spaces enhance social cohesion and one's ability to live in a community and take part in something larger. Neighborhoods need common spaces for meeting, engaging, and community life, just as ours has, making it a safer, more enjoyable place to live. Allowing this green space playground and picnic area to be paved over will impact the mental health of our neighborhood. How could it not? It will make gathering, playing, and commuting more difficult and less accessible. How could it not? John Ball Park is not an underutilized space in need of something else to do. It is a thriving park that has allowed our neighborhood to thrive. So when I ask you to vote no, it is because with all insincerity, this is the best way to love John Ball neighbors, including the zoo itself. The zoo is our neighbor. We want to grow, we want the zoo to grow and develop. We want the zoo to thrive. We want them to figure out a better parking situation and to have their needs and the needs of their visitors addressed. We also want to live in harmony with the zoo. We, the community members directly affected by their decisions, just want to be considered and respected as they grow and expand. We need your help with that. The zoo can do better than this. They need boundaries. We're here to impress upon you the importance of fighting for a better way for everyone that's impacted. As the adage goes, it takes a village to raise a child. Our village needs a green space to continue congregating and growing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Juan Garcia on deck, card number 13, Margot Johnson. Are you Juan or Margot?
You skipped Emma. It was Emma, number 11.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Emma Garcia, number 11, on deck, Juan Garcia, number 12.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Emma Garcia. This is one of my wild animals who loves to roam the park. She's made a sign. We live at 50 Valley Avenue Northwest, two blocks from the park. On October 17, 2023, Peter stood here and said this, and I quote, "As we've engaged neighbors, they've asked, 'How do we know this isn't a death of a thousand cuts? When will it, the loss of green space, stop? But we, the zoo, are willing to commit to a change in the operating agreement that will contractually bind us to never using the remaining park space. We are willing to permanently protect 17 acres as a park.'" He then showed the map that reflected that plan and stated that this was the area that would remain a park in perpetuity and never be allowed to be anything but a park. He went on to say, "I don't think it's common that a business would try to put limits on itself, but we are a nonprofit. If I were a neighbor, I would want assurances that this would always be a park," end quote. As a nonprofit professional, I do not understand how the zoo has sacrificed its mission and core values in pursuit of a financial bottom line. While the zoo has touted that it needs more parking to be a first-in-class zoo, its mission is actually to inspire our community to be actively engaged in the conservation of wildlife and our natural environment. One of the primary values of their top five is community. Only 54% of zoos in the United States are nonprofits, and so this status for John Ball should not be taken lightly. They should not be viewed as a corporation who, whose end goal is financial gain, whether on behalf of itself or the money it can bring into Kent County. The mission of Kent County, as you know, is that the government is committed to providing resources and services that promote a high quality of life for the entire community. While the zoo's desire to bring in more funding from outside of Kent County must be appealing to the county, the zoo is primarily beholden to accomplish its mission. While the county has a stated duty to meet the budget, that duty is subservient to its mission to promote a high quality of life for the 2,000
mission to promote a high quality of life for the two thousand constituents who have asked you to vote no today to the zoo's master plan. The county has the power to prioritize its mission on this issue. This is your opportunity to hold the nonprofit zoo accountable to its mission, values, and stated commitments to this community. We're not asking for anything unreasonable. We just don't want to lose any more of our park. Please hold them accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Juan Garcia, and on deck, we have Margot Johnson, card number thirteen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Juan Garcia, Fifty Valley Avenue. As a Southern California transplant, living here on the west side, part of what has made my living experience here so wonderful has been the escape from the concrete jungle that is Southern California. And in living here, I have found great refuge in green spaces and open air and reduced development. Now, this green space that is just a few blocks down my house is being threatened by the zoo, and a pattern of development is emerging, and the concrete jungle is now knocking on my front door. In the operating agreement of 2013 between the zoo and the county, it states in section two point two point six that the zoo will maintain and operate a public park in a manner reasonably designed as to not cause or create complaints from neighboring property owners and in a manner substantially similar to the standards of public access and/or use for a park with similar amenities operated by the Kent County Park Department. The inconsistencies between the county and the zoo here and the gross disregard for legally binding language in the operating agreement should give the commission immense pause before voting yes to the unjustified goals of the zoo's master plan. This has gone on long enough. The zoo keeps trying to slide major changes through without people knowing, and the county needs to use its full authority to tell the zoo no to a plan that has absolutely no financial mission, no financial, missional, or community-centric merit. Especially when a threat that the county has identified in its own SWOT analysis is companies or organizations stepping over people in the name of profit. It is time to say no to an ego-driven profit over people. I would also like to add that I believe that the county should be enforcing that cars not park on a county green space on our park, and there shouldn't even be an overflow lot in the green space to begin with that is risking the safety of our kids. Thank you so much for your time. And the last thing I would like to say is just say a big thank you to all the Commissioners and the county workers who have worked with us so closely. We appreciate all of you very much, and also a big round of applause to the community and to the neighbors who are doing all of this work that was necessary to make this kind of thing happen. I yield to the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Margot Johnson, and on deck, Kurt Repart, Repart. Card number fourteen.
Hi, my name is Margot Sudini Johnson. I am a resident of the neighborhood. I live on Butterworth, and I'm also the president of John Ball Area Neighbors. John Ball Area Neighbors did not receive a presentation from the zoo. We have asked them to come, and they will not, they did not want to come, and they said they will not come in the future. So we would like that changed. In addition to that, our neighborhood has been engaged with Friends of Grand Rapids Parks for an extended period of time, and we agree with their letter completely, and that is the city's goal to increase the tree canopy and also to create park spaces so that people don't have to walk more than ten minutes to get to a park. This plan defeats that completely. We need our green space, especially in this particular area, because we're surrounded by highways, and it blocks much of the environmental issues as a result of that. So we need our green space. In addition to that, when the property was transferred to the county, there was a agreement that this park, this historic park, would remain. We need our park. And the amendment that was passed earlier this year about, and I know it was voted for by many because it at least gave back some green space, still has not been returned to green space, and the new plan, at least the last one I saw, actually reduces the amount that was previous, that the Commissioners previously voted for because they wanted to return some green space. You have the power to approve or disapprove this, this plan. Profit over people is what we've been hearing consistently. Profit over environmental preservation seems inconsistent with a zoo's goal, and we would like you to vote no on this. And I, too, would like to thank the people who have been involved in working with our neighbors as to what the priorities are and to help them retain some of their quality of life, and most importantly, I want to thank the neighbors for coming up and voicing their position. It has been consistent, and it's consistent, and the word is, they consistently have not been listened to. We hope you do.
Thank you.
Next up, Kurt Repart, on deck, Dale Bergman from Sparta Township, card number fifteen.
Good morning, Commissioners and Administrator Vandenberg. My name is Kurt Repart. I served as a city commissioner here on the other side of the building for five years, also served on the board of John West Fulton Business Association for twelve years, and was on the John Ball Zoo CEO Advisory Council for many years prior to Peter's arrival. For twenty years, I've tracked every change that the zoo has made over the course of three CEOs. And my wife and I and two kids live right on the park at one-two-three-two Park Street. I loved the park, and it was my refuge during the pandemic. It's wild to me that a change this large doesn't have to go to the Grand Rapids City Commission or Planning Commission for approval. And so therefore, the community, my neighbors, is, are, we're relying on you to listen to our concerns and to push back on the zoo, to tell them that their plan is unnecessarily aggressive, and ask them to grow at a pace that honors the neighborhood. This plan doesn't honor the neighborhood. It's a suburban solution for a unique urban neighborhood. The city of Grand Rapids just released their master plan, which calls for more trees, transit partnerships, adding green space, and moving away from surface parking lots. You have the ability to ask the zoo to come in alignment, which is in the city of Grand Rapids, to the city's master plan. One year ago, you approved the 2023 amendment, and I'll say to you that even that amendment cut deep already. That wound is still fresh for us, and now this is coming forward, a broad solution to an acute problem, one that does not demonstrate creativity. Here's the reality. When I sit on my front porch and I look out at the park, most of the time, I will look at a completely empty parking lot. Maybe I should buy some rollerblades, I guess. I have sat in the seat that you're sitting in now as a city commissioner, and our neighborhood is experiencing incredible pressure. There's an amphitheater. There's a soccer stadium. There's three towers with hundreds and hundreds of apartments. You could make these things all work together in order to create, in order to avoid hardship for the neighbors. You have the power and the authority to say to the zoo, bring us a plan that honors the neighborhood. Bring us a plan that is aligned to the city's master plan and which you reside, and bring us a plan that's been informed by the community. Thank you for listening. Thank you to Al and Josh for all the time that you've spent with my neighbors and Tony, Stephen, and Yvonne. I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
Next up, Dale Bergman from Sparta Township, and on deck, there's no card sixteen. We're going straight to seventeen with Matea Spencer Repart.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dale Bergman. I'm the Sparta Township Supervisor. I just got elected to my eighth term, and I came here this morning to thank Tom Antor for his fine service to the, as Kent County Commissioner, and also say to him, why are you retiring so early? No, Tom has been great for our township. I really appreciate Tom and his work with the veterans. He's organized a Freedom Cruise for so many years, and it's been so successful, working with the Gold Star families. And in my own life, I, my Uncle Ray Fix died in World War II, and he's buried in Tilly, France. My mother was an Army nurse. My father-in-law served in the Army Air Corps, and there's no higher thing you can do than respect the military and the veterans and those that have given their lives really for our freedoms. Tom has been very excellent about doing that and never, never forgetting the veterans. We really appreciate it. And also, Tom has always tried to preserve farm. In Sparta Township, we are blessed with the type of soils and topography that is unique, clay soils, clay loam soils, that hold the moisture, which is very unique, and also has a higher topography elevation to particularly grow fruit. And we're actually one of the leading areas for fruit production in Michigan, and we're also world-renowned. So thank you so much, Tom, and just don't think about running for supervisor. That's all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Matea Spencer Repart, and on deck, we have card number nineteen, Beth Antor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matea Spencer Repart, and I'm a neighbor of the park and the zoo. I submitted a public comment in writing, and so I don't have much else to add to all the amazing and powerful comments that have been offered by our community members. Please listen. So today, I want to use my time to express some gratitudes, first to our beautiful community and so many that have written, submitted comments, and spoken up. I hold gratitude for the tireless work of our park leader advocates, Amy and Tina. They are incredible, and it's been a long haul, and we wouldn't be here without them. I also want to thank County Administrator Vandenberg and Director Spencer. For the past year, Al and Josh have hosted numerous conversations between neighbors and zoo staff and Commissioners. My experience with your administrative leadership has been one of deep mutual respect, as we've chosen to see each other's integrity and humanity, acknowledging that we're all wrestling to do the right thing by our community. They've often surprised me if I've experienced being heard, listened to, and met with responsiveness, and they even came to meet us in our neighborhood. We do not always agree, and I have felt deep anger and sadness and grief around the developments of the zoo and the park. We've sometimes been angry and frustrated with each other, but as a wise elder said, it's not a real relationship until we get mad at each other. And we hold a commitment to build trust and do work in relationship with, which is the foundation of a vibrant community. I'd also like to specifically thank Commissioner Baker for your exceptional responsiveness, keen insight, hard work, and dedication to community throughout this ordeal. Thank you to Commissioner Wooden, as I know you spent countless hours digging into this issue. This is your last meeting for you both, and I'm grateful. We'll miss you. I extend my sincere gratitude to Commissioner Hennessy. You've been a tireless and relentless advocate for our community, as well as Commissioner Pakla McCloud. I know you've been working hard behind the scenes. You've done so much. Commissioner Sparks, Diaz, DeBoer, Oliver King, you've met with neighbors. That doesn't go unnoticed. It takes extra time and effort, and thank you for Chair Steck for your always being so responsive. I ask you to please reference my letter regarding the zoo's master plan process. I outlined eight stellar points that I'd ask for you to consider, specifically two legal opinions that cast doubt on the county's legal conclusions on the use of space, which continue to cause confusion and question, according to the rigorous legal analysis offered by two separate firms. There is nothing prohibiting the county or the zoo from preserving the park space and enhancing it. Thank you very much for your time and for your public service.
Thank you.
Next, we have the First Lady of the Second District, Beth Antor, and on deck, we have Jalen Giraud, card number twenty.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Beth Antor, ninety-three forty-one LaBock Avenue in Sparta. I want to thank Commissioner Antor for his service. There are very few people that I voted for that I would vote for again and again and again, and he is one of them, along with President Trump. You are truly Dave Ramsey before Dave Ramsey was Dave Ramsey when it comes to your fiscal responsibility and your integrity. I wish more politicians were, and I don't even want to call you a politician because you're not, you're just a public servant, and I appreciate that, and I wish there was more people like that, that would be beholden to their constituents and not to special interests and the holy dollar. But I am reading from our fourteen-year-old granddaughter who lives in Florida, and she writes, "Dear Grandpa, thank you for being present in my life, no matter how many miles are between us. Thank you for always taking on interest in my running and anything else I have going on, no matter how big or small. And most importantly, thank you for teaching me to think outside the box and stand up for things that are important to me. Some of my earliest memories are visiting your house and playing the games that you came up with. Though these are not the games that you would expect an eight-year-old to be playing, my favorite was Interviews, the game you originally played with my mom and aunts. You never went easy on me, and most of the time, I didn't even make it through the interview process because I messed something up and you told me you found someone else to fill the position." And I don't know if this is how you meant it, but anytime I have an interview or make a presentation now, it comes naturally because all of the practice I had was with you. I am so thankful that you are always a phone call away to answer all my questions, no matter how big or small. Anytime I have a project I am working on and have any questions concerning community, government, or really any other topic, my mom reminds me to call you with any questions I have, and you not only answer, but will stay on the phone asking me questions and informing me on the subject as long as I would like. You have taught me to challenge people, ask questions, be confident, and argue against things I don't believe in. After any track meet, I am, I can expect a call from you, and you have always been ecstatic and ready to hear about every detail. It is the best feeling to know that you are just as excited as me when I get done with a race. I never knew much about your time as a commissioner, mostly because up until I was eleven, I had it confused with a treasure and had a picture in my mind that you carried around the city's money. But based on what I know about you, I can only assume you were great in office. You may not understand the impact you've had and can continue to have on my life, but it is immense simply by being present and making me feel important. Thank you for always taking care of your family and taking part in raising my mom to be the woman she is today. I am forever grateful for you. Love, Avery C."
Thank you.
Next up, Jalen Giraud, and on deck, card number twenty-one, Dave Giraud.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here and for listening to us on a topic that is important to so many of us that are here. My name is Jaclyn Giroux. I live at two thirteen Garfield Avenue Southwest, just a couple houses in from Sacred Heart Catholic Church and around the corner from the zoo. When I first learned about the zoo's plan to expand their parking and comparing the 2015 master plan to the 2023 amendment, there were a couple things that I actually really found to like about the 2023 amendment. I appreciated that the plan proposed to remove the cars away from the park on the corner of Valiant Park, where our kids often play. I've got a seven-year-old, a four-year-old, a three-month-old. We have the joy of homeschooling. So as you can imagine, our home, our community, our neighborhood is an integral part of how we educate and our day-to-day function. is an integral part of how we educate and our day-to-day functioning as a family. I appreciated that the proposal would remove enough of the traffic away from residential streets and onto the main roads. And while I didn't love the idea of acres of green space being paved for the parking lot, to me, the silver lining in that proposal was the zoo's promise to maintain the remaining green space. They told us that they would remove the gravel parking, fill it in with grass, and update the remaining green space that we call John Ball Park for the whole community to enjoy. So to see the 2025 master plan, including none of that, is incredibly disappointing. We were told that there would be public bathrooms available for the park, that they would fill in the gravel parking, expanding the park for everyone to enjoy, that they would be planting native plants, pollinator gardens, and that they would include several miles of pedestrian paths for walking, biking, and jogging. I love the zoo. We go there often. I'm not opposed to them expanding their exhibition in and of itself. What I'm opposed to is them encroaching on the green space in order to do so. So I'm kindly asking that you vote no to the 2025 master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dave Jarreau, and on deck, card number 22, Mallory Glass.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dave Jeru, and I live on 213 Garfield Avenue Southwest. As a member of the John Ball Park neighborhood, and also as senior pastor of Berean Baptist Church in the Creston neighborhood, you'll often hear me say to our congregation just about every single Sunday that we exist to be a church that has an impact not only in Creston, but throughout Grand Rapids and to the nations. I want our people to be people who are in their neighborhoods, with their neighborhoods, and for their neighborhoods. And I'm simply here today to practice what I preach. I don't get, I don't, this is me out of my element. This is not me in my comfort zone because I don't believe in the enmeshment of government and church. But what I want to say here is, I was in favor of the 2023 amendment, and I'm standing in a position there that's different than most of my neighbors who are here saying to vote no. You're doing a great job, Peter, in so many ways, and I believe that you have the best interest of the zoo and the community in your heart. I believe that we can do better together in this effort, and I think that there's more time that needs to be at the drawing board. I have nothing new to be able to contribute to this conversation, honestly. You have heard 20 different people provide you with opinions from the neighborhood. I have nothing new to add. I simply just put out to you the words that Jesus has said often to his audiences in the scriptures, whoever has ears to hear, let him hear. Whoever has ears to hear, let him hear. We are speaking out in a democratic environment, saying, "Hear the people, hear the neighborhood, hear me, hear us. Please vote no, and let's keep working together to come up with a better solution because I know it's out there. We just got to give it more time to cook." Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mallory Glass, and on deck, card number 23, Daniel Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Antor, one of the greatest blessings of my life has been growing up in your world. It started with the Hunt and Time Expo. As little kids, we got to experience the American dream happened firsthand right from home. We not only watched you build a business from scratch, but got to participate in making your dream become a reality. You taught us valuable life lessons, how to answer phone calls and take messages, how to take money and make change for ticket sales, how to be polite yet confident when speaking to adults. Most importantly, you were able to do it all from within the walls of our house. As we grew older, your ambitions grew too. When you decided to run for county commissioner, we were there, knocking on all of the doors, delivering all of the yard signs, and cheering you on through every election cycle. You never faltered in your beliefs or convictions. You've always stood firm on your conservative values and taught us to do the same, always learning, always asking questions, and always ready to give an answer. In the political sphere, I've watched you be ridiculed and slandered and strongly disliked for who you are and what you stand for. You call out corruption and refuse to bend the knee to mob mentality. You've never faltered nor feared repercussions for defending your values. And as a result, you've raised three fiercely independent women who can do the same. Thank you for demonstrating integrity in a world where so many don't know the meaning of the word. In the time that I've known Commissioner Antor, I've grown to not only enjoy conversations with him, but respect and admire him. In a day and age where the very thought of respecting and admiring a person with any amount of political power seems far-fetched, Commissioner Antor makes it easy. While most politicians are seemingly pleasant and attentive on the surface, the overwhelming majority always have an ulterior motive, or are simply put, completely uninterested in day-to-day concerns of the majority of residents within their districts. They worry more about the political image and climbing the political ladder than they do about the task they were elected to do, but not you. This is what makes Tom Antor the perfect candidate to hold such an office. I'm not sure I've ever met a more principled person in my life. Whether dealing with a moral issue or a budget issue, he will not and has not ever wavered from his convictions and the firm foundation of faith. Special interest groups, corporate lobbyists, and spineless individuals on both sides of the aisle have invaded local and federal-level politics and left the average American citizen feeling every bit of completely underrepresented. What the residents of Kent County's district too have had in Commissioner Tom Antor for the last 14-plus years is that of a true leader and a representative of the people that not only voted for him, but the ones that didn't. Simply put, he's always fighting for the underdog. Come hell or high water and everything in between, Commissioner Antor has and will never concede to the political swamp. You simply cannot bully the man out of his morals and beliefs. Commissioner Tom Antor is the type of leader who you want to introduce your kids to and who you want them to learn from, who you want them to come to with tough questions that need well-thought-out answers. He's the type of person you're proud to know. Your three daughters are so incredibly proud of you. Job well done.
Thank you.
Next up, Daniel Scott, and on deck, card number 24, Sergio Sierra-Raez.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. Chairman Steck, thank you for your invocation. I don't know if you do this, but your first name means "from the rocky meadow."
I've been told that.
Yeah. Your last name means influencer. Make sure you tell your wife that.
No, I'm not telling her.
I'm Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Kent County, of course, but my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm not here to speak about the park, although I live just a block from there. And I could say I agree with many of the comments that have already been made. I want to address the agenda item, City of Grand Rapids' contribution to support the West Michigan Welcome Plan and Global Gathering Events Funds, but also tied into Attorney General or Prosecutor Mr. Becker. He spoke about addressing the root causes of domestic violence. According to the Holy Scriptures, the murder of children in the womb, what the world calls abortion, is certainly a cause, a major cause of that, in my opinion, but also according to the Scriptures. Scripture says, "You sow violence, you reap violence, you shed blood, you will reap blood." The summary of the request here says, "Ensure safe and connected communities." I believe if you asked all the babies being murdered at 425 East Cherry, just within two miles from where we're sitting and standing, if you asked those babies, and if they could speak, they would say to you they do not feel safe and connected, as they are literally torn apart limb by limb, body parts sold, et cetera. The place is called Planned Parenthood.
Mr. Chair, this is our last card, Bill Hirsch.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our county. It's been a little while since I've been in the room. 16 years ago, I started a journey with Commissioner Antor. Tom's managed to hold on until he wanted to leave. Me, not so much. Well done, Tom. Win at all costs. It's amazing to me the money that gets pumped into political campaigns. And I've been told by several people, "Bill, it's a feather in your cap," that they spent over $70,000 to keep you because a farmer from Gaines Township is a threat who wants to protect agriculture, the land that feeds us. The money is one thing, but it's the personal attacks the people behind the money are willing to do. Tom and I have both been victims of this. As recent as this week, I've seen Commissioner Antor under attack, and he's on his way out. It affects us. It's affected our marriages. It's affected our kids. It's affected our friends. Win at all costs. This isn't Flint or Chicago. This is Kent County, Michigan, a place I've been proud to call home my entire life. Tom, it was an honor and a privilege to serve with you. Some people change when they take office. You never have. I want you to walk out of this building today with your head held high. Well done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, that is all of the public comment from individuals who have signed cards. I will note as well that we received many emails, texts, other communications to the county on public comment issues. Those have, I think, all been distributed to the Commissioners, so those also are or were available. So, other than that, any other comment from anyone from the public on agenda items only at this time? If not, I will close public comment and move to item number seven, Consent Agenda, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the adoption of the Consent Agenda for today's date.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden?
No, Commissioner Coleman.
Still can't get my name right.
Well, you can race from this angle. I can't tell the difference. All right, any further comments on the motion? If not, this is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Antor...
Yes.
Baker...
Yes.
Boujack...
Yes.
DeBoer...
Yes.
Vice Chair Green...
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy...
Yes.
Hildenbrand...
Yes.
Coleman...
Yes.
LeGrand...
Yes.
McCloud...
Yes.
Merchant...
Yes.
Oliver King...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Wooden...
Yes.
Chair Steck...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight on our agenda, and as I indicated earlier, we will move to item 8B first, and I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 8B of today's date, the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2025, brought to us by the Fiscal Services Department.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported by Commissioner Burrow.
Questions or comments on this one? Our Administrator Tori Richardson was here, is here, there he is, in case there's any questions on this motion. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I'll abbreviate my comments from Finance Committee, but while I generally vote against new debt, this is not new debt. It's refinancing debt and saving substantial funds. So I'm very much in favor of saving money. I did point out at Finance that the original bonds that we're refunding here, the 2015 series, rolled up debt that was as old as 1995. So that was one of the first votes that I took as a Commissioner. And that's just, I think, a cautionary tale for myself and hopefully others to just try to avoid the cycle of just perpetual debt. When I started on this board in 2015, our nation had $18 trillion in debt racked up over a couple centuries. Since I've been on this board, the U.S. has added an additional $18 trillion in debt in just those almost 10 years now. So it's a debt cycles are bad. Let's keep Kent County out of them.
All right, any other comments, questions on this particular motion? I don't see any.
So, it's a debt cycles are bad, let's keep Kent County out of them.
All right, any other comments, questions on this particular motion? I don't see any. All right, this is a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution one three-three, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Breevy.
Yes.
Boojack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz. Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Teal. Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution one three-three is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now move to item eight A, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the adoption of Resolution number one hundred and thirty-two, John Ball Zoo Ten Year Master Plan, from the Admin Office. Is there support?
Supported by Commissioner Hildebrand.
I will note that, uh, Commissioner Merchant is here and, uh, has requested and has granted, um, abstention from this debate and vote. Is there any comment with respect to the motion? All right, I'll go with Commissioner Boojack first, and then Commissioner Baker.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Um, I had a question regarding, uh, the master plan. Page twelve, it shows, uh, open transition event space where it says no parking and a hundred fifty-foot residential buffer. Um, do we know how many actual acres that area encompasses?
Um, it's Josh.
Josh is not here.
Josh is here.
Oh, there he is. More slower than usual, Josh.
Uh, I actually, I, I think I would prefer, I don't know, Alman, if you want to answer that part? Just so I'm not speaking out of, out of school.
The question is, what's the approximate acreage of the space in the indicated open space on page twelve?
So, we're talking about the space above the hundred fifty-foot buffer area?
Or including?
Including the buffer. So, so that whole space that will not have parking and could be perceived as the park or open space that's left? Yeah, it's nineteen acres.
Nineteen acres?
Give or take a couple feet. It's a substantial amount of space.
All right, um, I think Commissioner Baker was next.
We've spent a lot of time thinking about this. Um, you know, I, I'm just thinking about when, um, about a year and a half ago, uh, when Peter and the zoo came to present. Lisa and I were talking about our kids going to school there and generally celebrating our time at the zoo. Um, I've had, I, I, I think that when we critique the zoo leadership, there's, I've had a lot of great conversations with, um, zoo board members, and I really appreciate their engagement. Um, I'm, you know, have become very, um, upset and, and concerned about the lack of, uh, about the distrust that's being created in the community. I voiced this in August. Um, there, I just, I just, as has been said here, I think that there's been a disregard for community. At one level, I think of, here we have a group of people that share probably almost everybody, I can talk to Peter forever, and I, and I had before I even got on this commission about the zoo and about conservation, about the role. I, we have a community people who feel exactly the same way about these issues. And yet, we can't figure out a way to work together to solve the problems that are going to be related to the revenue and the future growth of the, um, audience for the zoo. Um, that's a, that, that's been a lack of trust. I've been really upset about the disingenuous comments that have been directed towards the, to, uh, our Administrator, his staff, um, board members who have been, um, accused of bullying, um, the leadership of the zoo to do things that, uh, I, I mean, it's just, I, I can't imagine when I know I've had conversations with people and these things aren't true. Um, I, I also am very concerned about the fact that the West Side, I'm not a West Sider, I've spent a lot of time on the West Side, I have friends on the West Side. Um, I've, since I came to Grand Rapids twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, I've seen the West Side, um, have to, have to make way for institutions that are expanding. And we're getting ready to expand significant institutionals on the soccer stadium, the amphitheater. I've seen, on the last two years I've been on this commission, we have been, and I applaud this, buying up space and providing space for public parks and green spaces throughout the county. Yet, we're going to take it away from here, and we should do it in the sense that somehow it's best for the county as a whole. Um, the zoo has an ability to work with its community to find solutions to its problem. Um, to some extent, I mean, I jokingly said this, it seems like we're, like this is manifest destiny, we're going to take as much land as possible so that way we won't have to mess around and be bothered by these people asking for more anymore. Um, and it, it just boggles my mind, again, when we're talking about people who generally like and agree with each other. Um, in January, I took, I voted to support that twenty twenty-three amendment. We spent a lot of time as a board, we visited space, we walked the park, we saw where the space was going to be redeveloped into green space and where the land, and I made a decision to support that amendment, um, even though it harmed, it harmed friends of mine. Um, and now, months later, you know, my rationale was that we give them this so that way we can protect the green space, and then I discovered later, um, that it's not going to happen. I, I voted with the idea in January that this was a compromise that we would work through, um, and I, you know, as much as I appreciate the concessions that have come about in the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours, um, even that, even the fact that there are concessions have been made, um, in the last forty-eight hours, shows that there was a lack of genuine trust with each other to do this work earlier before this plan came to us. Because we've had two or three different maps given to us since this, um, agenda was posted a week ago. Um, I strongly appreciate those concessions. I definitely support, um, the, the people on this commission who worked hard to get those. I really appreciate, um, Al and Josh for their work to try to figure out a way to make it, um, to make this work. Um, unless somebody can convince me this is somehow better. Uh, uh, but even if this is better, I just don't have the trust that I, that we will go forward and that we won't be here, that you all won't be here six months, a year from now, um, debating this again. Um, I, you know, I don't think I can support a plan that was not come about through broad community trust. That's all I have.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I, I was searching here frantically through, for the right map. I was wondering about that nineteen acres, if it was contiguous or not. And I see, I think, based on this map, primarily it's pretty much contiguous with a couple maybe islands that are not. So, I figured it out. I had so much information in front of me, I was glad I called this, thank you.
All right, um, anyone else? Mr. Pakla?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few questions for Admin, if that might be all right. Um, you know, we, we heard in our emails, uh, and we heard today, um, a request for the county to enforce no parking on the grass. Is, is there someone that can talk a little bit about where we currently stand with our ability to actually enforce no parking on the grass, whether that's something that is in existence in our powers that are given to us?
I'll start, and then Josh can, uh, fill in if needed. Uh, so I think what you're referring to is in the zoo operating agreement, uh, where it basically says that the, the area that's, uh, uh, park land will be maintained as that by the zoo. Uh, and what's interesting is, when we talk about cars not parking on the grass, the exhibit in that agreement actually has cars parking on the grass. So, I think that that's something that's been with us, uh, pretty much as long as we've had the zoo, that there are times when it's full and the cars are parked on the grass. Uh, what we have done in our enforcement of the zoo operating agreement is when we do get complaints, uh, we turn those over to, uh, Alman at the zoo, and what we've found is that those have been responded to within twenty-four hours. Uh, but as far as our actual ability to, uh, require the zoo to not park cars on the grass, we have not gone to that extent.
And I can add that just, just a little bit, that was, that was a great answer. Um, in that, uh, you know, some of the conversation was about preserving space in perpetuity. Now, the county did, did state, when that was raised, that at that time wasn't willing to do that. But the, the decision was still on the operator on whether to park cars on the grass, as it, as it has been even when the county was running the zoo. Um, and so I think as this conversation's coming up, is, uh, is that was squarely on the operator outside the hundred fifty feet. Um, and trying to work through, uh, what, which is what this does, is the zoo is, is electing not to park cars on the grass as part of this plan. And we, we felt that that was a better solution and provided the flexibility going forward as well, not drawing futu- future li- further lines that has already, you know, in the past has complicated a lot of things, so.
Okay. Um, we, we heard a lot today about, uh, the zoo promises in the past to not park on that grass and to create a space in perpetuity, as Josh just, just talked about. Um, i- is anyone able to talk a little bit about the disconnect between the November proposed plan, where that was contextually part of that plan compared to the January plan that we adopted?
Sure, and I specifically asked Josh to compare all those different timeframes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yes, the, the, the plan that was presented first in October, uh, I actually believe of, of last year, um, uh, once, uh, we worked through some, some changes to the area of paved parking, um, that did reduce the parking space, um, and we did communicate to the zoo we weren't willing to do that, you know, secure something in perpetuity, um, that, that offer to not park cars on the grass was, was, uh, taken back by the zoo. Um, and they did communicate that. We definitely could have, as Administrator, been, and, and, and me and myself could have done a better job of communicating that at the time. I think that was, that was a failure of ours to, uh, explain fully the ramifications, but that was something that was done. And so, still, that, that decision still lies with the zoo on whether or not to park cars on the grass. And so, um, that's what we've decided at the time and, and how we've been operating.
So, as a follow-up, right now, is there any actual protected either in a, um, protected by use of a barrier, protected by use of the, use of the space, green space? Is there a protected green space that exists on the property right now, uh, specifically in that area that's being considered for the transitional zone and the buffer?
Outside of the hundred fifty-foot buffer, um, there isn't anything currently in an, in an actual two-party agreement. Um, however, the, the verbiage in the master plan itself, um, is significant, um, and there's some leeway, I think Administrator has, on whether to approve additional capital investments if there's, uh, if the zoo is in violation of something that's in the existing master plan. So, I think there is some of that, but, um, that's not, it's not, in order to go further, would have to be written in an actual operating agreement, and that's not the case right now.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm wondering if someone can speak a little bit to the changes that were made to the plan that we're seeing today as a result of the neighbor, the neighbor feedback? And the community feedback, really?
Let me bring up the slides, just so, if I can do this right. How do I make this full screen, that's the... Maybe somebody can hear my voice can help, okay.
It's probably as good as you're going to get it, yeah.
All right, let me get to... Okay, this still has the, um, so... Where are we at? Sorry, guys. Okay, so, the, many of the changes, uh, are reflected in this slide here. So, one, uh, when this plan was presented to the community, uh, the, the line for the transition space was at three hundred feet, uh, and it has since moved to three hundred and seventy-five feet. Um, one of the additional substantial changes is it does say at least three hundred and seventy-five feet. Um, it gives us the flexibility to work with the zoo in the future, and perhaps, uh, you know, the zoo leadership has communicated that they do hope that that green space can be larger, um, and maybe communication from the county has, has impacted that. So, it allows, gives us the flexibility to communicate that we would love to see that larger, and we'll work with them to do that. The other, uh, change is, uh, there was a lot of community feedback on, well, when, when is this green space available? How do we know that it's not going to be ten years and you're still going to be parking cars on the grass while things happen? So, there was an immediate, uh, so at the two hundred and twenty-five-foot line from, I know the system, look, uh, from the, the, the eastern boundary, and that does include the hundred fifty-foot buffer, um, that green space will be, um, will be, uh, protected immediately, um, starting next, next year, uh, when the zoo opens, there will be no cars parked on the grass, and that area will be protected. Um, the additional three hundred and seventy-five feet will be, uh, there will be cars parked there until that east parking lot expansion is completed. Um, and so that's the, that, so immediately, there's more green space that, uh, but before any other additional parking spaces are constructed, um, and then the rest would occur when that east parking lot is completed. Um, and again, pointing to that, at least three hundred and seventy-five feet, so there's still some flexibility to work with, maybe there's, there's more green space. Uh, the final change I'll highlight is, uh, to the, just to the, um, you know, this, this map is actually situated, uh, west to east, not north to south. So, just to the left of the pond, as you're looking at it, um, and right where that concrete is, there's a, there's an old grove of trees that are there. Um, and we heard a lot of feedback, I, I know a lot of Commissioners received communications about that grove of trees. Um, and so, there was a, a mutual understanding of protecting, uh, the mature trees in that area and preserving as many of them as they can, defined as that fifteen-inch diameter at, at breast height, four, four point five feet. Um, and so, there's additional language, and it actually is highlighted in this version, um, that, uh, that the zoo is committing to preserve as many of those trees as possible, and that any removal of trees that are, uh, beyond fifteen, or fifteen feet of diameter or beyond would require Administrator approval to remove.
Inches.
Would I say feet? Yeah.
That's a big tree.
Yeah. Sorry, inches. Um, yep, and then, uh, there is an exhibit at the very, very end that just outlines where that, what, the trees that we're talking about. So, there's, it's clear on, on the area that we're referencing. So, I think I covered all the changes that I'm aware of. Did I miss any?
I think you have these changes from the most recent.
Most recent.
And I think one final question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, we, we heard today in public comment, we saw in our emails a lack of trust between the community and the zoo. We heard Commissioner Baker speak to a lack of trust between the zoo leadership and the community and the county. I'm wondering if either Josh or Al could speak a little bit to how the master plan as proposed might be addressing those concerns relative to trust? And maybe, the, the way I'm seeing is that perhaps by having them in the master plan, we are creating less opportunity for that trust to be broken because they are now in the master plan and, but I might be wrong on that. I wonder if either you can speak to that?
I'll, I'll start, and then Josh can back clean up again. I, I would say the, what the master plan does, it brings greater clarity, uh, to the areas that have been in dispute. And so, that should help us, uh, all move forward, I think, uh, with greater trust. The other thing is, I, I think the, uh, we did, uh, convene a group of neighbors and, uh, and county staff, and then we added zoo staff to that as well. And they, we've basically met once a month since January. We may have missed once, one or two in there. And in my mind, that's been a really solid process to identify problems. Uh, and, and the neighborhood brings up problems, you know, we, the zoo responds, and I think we have knocked through a list of, of smaller items, uh, successfully over that time. So, I would see that process or something very similar to it continuing.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't have much to add. I think just looking at just the, the, what the zoo was able to do with Lantern Fest and make some, some incremental changes that did reduce the impact of that event on the neighborhood is a good example of, of how that works and how that will continue.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Um, it has been, uh, wonderful. I've, I've joined the last two meetings. It's been a really nice cooperative, um, conversation between our administration, the St. John Ball Park Neighbors, and, and I particularly will note Alman from the zoo who's participated in that. And, and I think that, you know, it's been a very polite, reasonable, um, conversations, and they've been really very productive. And you can see that today in the changes that Josh was just outlining for us. You know, and, and to be somewhat repetitive, but here we are, the second time in the year talking about a master plan, and all we're focusing in on is the park. talking about a master plan, and all we're focusing in on is the parking and the green space that's left. And the changes made this week have been really very responsive. But there has not been a lot of conversation about what's actually in this master plan and the other thirty-some pages that it constitutes. And the Otter exhibit is going on right now, and that will be an engaging way to enter the zoo. Almond has spoken to the neighbors a little bit about Phase Two, which will be opening up with the giraffes. And I think that it's worth talking about a little bit to see what that exhibit does because that, again, will be some landscape changes and how that would come about and what it would mean. There's, there, there's not, this is, you know, it's like you wait forever, and then all of a sudden, this plan is in front of us. And there's not been a lot of real focused conversation on this whole master plan. We didn't take it to a finance or a legislative committee. The engagement had its ups and downs. I went to three of the four recent sessions of community engagement. Didn't find any of them really satisfying, but they were available at last minute, but available. And so, I would just like to talk more, and particularly to go into what would come after the otters, and that is the giraffes, and how that would be done, and how we expect all these dreams and all these visions that we're ignoring, how we expect them to come to fruition within the zoo if they could address that. I would appreciate it.
Josh?
So, I think those types of conversations would be most appropriate coming from the zoo. So, I kind of left up here for you to navigate, I guess, if you want to run at a high level on some of the highlights of the exciting parts of the master plan and the vision for the future.
Thank you for the question. Not sure I understand it a hundred percent. I think you're asking, what are the elements within the master plan over the next ten years, and how do we plan on accomplishing it?
Well, yeah, particularly, well, we've got the otters being built.
Right.
And that will be opening up in twenty-six. And then, and then the next thing you'll be raising the money for will be for the giraffes. And that will change the landscape again. And so, perhaps you can talk a little bit about what the interest of giraffes and how you will build this.
Right. So, master plans are a visionary document. It's a document of what can be or what could be over the ten years. And as you pointed out, otters is in effect right now, which was approved under the current master plan. The giraffes is the first major project within this master plan, assuming it gets approved. And that will bring giraffes to the John Ball Zoo. It'll include a giraffe viewing yard of a little over an acre, between one and two acres. It'll provide feeding for giraffes, and it will provide a substantial indoor barn for giraffes that also provide feeding. We're also very proud of the animal welfare that we provide for our animals. So, what's unique about the indoor viewing is guests will be able to see literally right into the space of where the giraffes are housed after hours, so they can see the care. The giraffe habitat is on the left side of the hill versus on the right side of the hill. I don't know if that answered your question?
So, how, talk to me about how you get to the giraffes, what that, you know, that portion of the hill and the elevation differences there. How, I mean, if we approve this master plan, that means that we're approving other changes that would have to happen.
Right.
Talk to me about those physical changes.
Right. The, we've, since twenty seventeen or so, we've worked really hard to make the zoo universal design, so all pathways fall within eighty-eight grade. So, in order to navigate a hillside zoo, the left side of the hill requires an eighty-eight grade pathway. So, there'll be a boardwalk that will, the pathway will start between lions and chimpanzees, and it'll transition into a boardwalk that will move you to the left side of the hill. And the existing area of the hill where the, the east side of the parking lot that's up there will basically become the giraffe yard. Am I getting that right, Almond? Almond designs it, so I want to make sure I got it right. And then, the barn will be on the backside of the habitat, which would be on the west side of the current lot. I'm not trying to move, oh, here we go.
Almond, can you maybe get into the microphone?
So, the giraffe barn will be...
Right up to it. There you go.
Yep, sorry. Giraffe barn will be on top of the, where the parking lot is, half of that upper area. And to the east will be the giraffe barn. It'll be about ten thousand square foot barn. It will take down trees in that lower area for that barn to sit, and the elevation will take it down about eight feet to set that barn there. Again, we're trying to have exceptional animal welfare to make sure they have indoor space when winter time.
So, the elevation comes down eight feet?
In that, around that ten thousand square foot area and the surrounding area to kind of get there, there's also been some geothermal wells in that area as well, you know? So, there will be some elevation change there.
I wouldn't say there's eight feet removed. There's eight feet of elevation in the space that has to be...
Rebalanced.
Yep, yep, yep.
But there will still be slopes in the area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're not going to take, it's just that upper area, there won't be eight foot of that area that barn's at. Again, you're going to have some pre-level space for the indoor housing. That area will be sunk about eight feet down.
I appreciate, I appreciate that explanation. Has this, has the, I mean, we've sort of bypassed some of our, chosen to bypass some of our structures in proving it going to committee or what have you, but has the zoo board itself approved of this plan?
Yes. That might be a question for our board chair, Matt Becker. But we did follow the, our zoo process for approving the master plan, as I'm sure you know as a board member.
This is Matt Becker, the chair of the board of the J.B. Zoo.
Good morning. Yes, Commissioner Hennessy, we have, we have approved as an executive committee the master plan in accordance with our governance documents.
The executive committee has approved it. Thank you. If I could just finish a statement a little bit, but, you know, and I'm okay right now, Peter. I'm just sort of, you know, it just really is, right now, you really are permanently and inextricably linked to a neighborhood. And it just strikes me that, that you need to really embrace this neighborhood, and there have been points in the past where this was really done, and somehow there became a disconnect here where there's really a division. And, you know, I feel like the zoo should just be embracing the neighborhood because you keep each other as safe, as convenient, welcoming places to be, and multiple uses. And I, I just, you know, have not understood, and it's caused a separation between us, how this lack of responsiveness has developed over the last couple of years. And, you know, traditionally, the neighbors have always wanted input on the green space, and then they have let the zoo dream its dream and fulfill its own vision for what comes within the zoo. And I, I think that there, you know, needs to be a return to that focus. Certainly, the Save John Ball Park group has been very, very focused in on what has been called the traditional park area. And they remain, you know, not as involved, but as involved as individuals who belong to the zoo in many cases, but, you know, will let you work on your zoo thing. And it is this working relationship that really has been a problem. And the zoo sometimes almost seems to be vindictive in coming back to us and coming, you know, and how the neighborhood is treated later. I'm pleased that within the last, you know, this week, that there have been some movements and some real concessions made to save valued trees, to have at least, at least two hundred and twenty-five feet of a safe space there. I was out there this summer when I was walking door to door, and in the evening could just see trucks going across that gravel, kicking up dust, and kids playing, walking nearby. And it was, and I do think that there, that as you go forward, that there really needs to be real, a conscious effort to keep everybody who is within that whole zoo and park space safe. And I think that the Save John Ball Park Committee has a role, and I'm glad that the county will continue working with them because they've been a very thoughtful, reasonable group. Thank you. I am voting no today, but that is in keeping with support for the neighbors and the efforts and the continuing efforts that they're making in this space.
Just again, before we get to the next one, reminder that questions should go to staff. Commentary should go to me.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Grant. I'm sorry, Commissioner DeBoer was next.
Thank you, Chairman. I have been so impressed with the John Ball Park community, and I wanted to thank them for their engagements with me, for their emails. Some of them sent me personalized emails, looked into my background, tried to connect with me, and I apologize for not replying to all of them, but I did very much appreciate all the engagement, and they are a force to be reckoned with. Their community is vibrant, and they are supportive, and so, kudos to that community. I'm coming from a perspective of being out of the city where my district is primarily more rural and driving a half hour into the zoo. And so, I, while I am sorrowful for the way some of this has been done and the processes that have occurred and how the missteps in some of the engagement with the community, I do have to consider, I do believe that there is more parking needed in the zoo, and I do have to consider these people that are coming outside of the heart of the city that need the parking arrangements for their young children to be able to properly access the zoo. So, I will be voting in favor, although I also share some of the sentiments that Commissioner Baker has said of just the concern and the distrust that have occurred throughout this process. I do get to hang around next year, and I do intend to defend any, to defend this green space that's left that they have. And so, I just wanted to thank you for the John Ball Park community, for the work that they've done. I will be voting in favor of it, and I hope we can continue to work together and find a solution that is good for the community as well.
Thank you. Commissioner LeGrand, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I have one quick question maybe for Josh, and that is, I understood that we were saving all of the trees fifteen-inch diameter and larger, but you, your language, I believe, was "if possible," which, does that mean that, you know, whoops, it's not possible, they all go?
Yeah. So, it does put that decision at the administrator, on the administrator's lap.
The county administrator.
The county administrator's lap. The, I think they would have to provide a very, very, very high level of reasoning for removing any tree larger than fifteen inches in diameter to be approved. But that is, it's not, you're correct, it doesn't state that all trees fifteen inches of diameter above will be saved. It says that they want to preserve as many as possible, and that any of those trees being removed has to be approved by the Kent County Administrator is the change that was made.
Okay, thank you. I guess I see really one good thing about this master plan, and to me, really only one, and that's we've achieved these concessions and that they're going to be in writing, that this compromise is in writing. The neighbors of the park have spoken in great detail about the long chain of broken promises that they've suffered through, which is why I support a written agreement, and I don't blame them at all for their lack of trust, at all. Janet Zahn, who spoke earlier, put her finger on what seems to me the biggest problem in the situation, which is our strange, the zoo's sort of strange governance structure. While it's in the city, but evidently in no way answerable to the city or having to work with the city's master plan or anything like that. It got, the city gave it to the county for financial reasons, and so, here we are, having to vote on it. And I'd really like to see the zoo board, and not its director, take a long, hard look at this plan and ask itself, what kind of zoo is it trying to be? What does first-in-class mean? Are we trying to be all things to all people? I see all the signs that leadership wants it to be a big suburban zoo, which would be fine if it was located out where Meyer Gardens is located, but it's not. It's here in the city, and the dreams, as we call them, of like removing part of a hilltop and building an indoor waterfall, to me, really start to feel like an episode of Fantasy Island or something. Like, I just really think we need to take a hard look at what our limits actually are. I don't think every art museum needs to be the Louvre or the Metropolitan Museum, and I don't think every zoo needs to be, you know, the Brookfield Zoo. I think we need to acknowledge those limits, and if those are, if those are going to impinge on what the zoo board wants its future to be, then they're going to have to start making a plan to move. Right now, I feel like we're just watching a car accident happening in slow motion, and I don't see this ending anytime soon. I mean, this is just one step. I really hope the neighbors will keep in mind that we have other areas to work on, the operating agreement, and yes, the mileage renewal, because we will have renewed, you know, eyes looking on that and what goes on, and that this is a master plan, is flexible, that it can and should be returned to. It's meant to be a guiding framework, but I don't, I, for one, do not intend to just approve this and then let it go because, because I just do not think that's right.
Understood.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's see. Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. At the risk of sounding too repetitive, I do want to start with one quick question. Building on Commissioner Hennessy's questions around the Africa Expansion exhibit, there's significant site preparation and site clearance that will be required to conduct this exhibit. And looking at our operating agreement, there's specific criteria that must be met before a capital project can be approved, one of them being the corporation, the zoo, Shopify documentation demonstrating that it has all funds necessary for construction of the proposed capital project, or has other financing commitments sufficient to fund the proposed capital project, and that it has slash will have sufficient resources for operation and maintenance. My biggest concern is, I know that this is going to be a heavy lift. It is, we have talked about this chicken-and-egg situation of approvals being necessary for fundraising, but also worrying of approving things without all funds in line, and certainly concerned that a project could start with site preparation and the site clearance that's been talked about, and then the funds do not come for the final project. Can you walk through how administration would approach defining sufficient resources, especially when it comes to this example of the Africa Expansion?
Well, that, we have enforced that with the zoo operating agreement. In fact, even within the past year, we've had initial concerns and then discussed those concerns with the zoo before moving forward with other improvements. So, that is important. I think the, kind of one of the major things you're referring to with the size of that exhibit would be whether phasing would be allowed or not.
Yeah.
And I don't have an answer for that right now, because we haven't seen a proposal. But Josh, go ahead and fill in the blanks.
Yeah, that's where it's critical that the county administration, zoo administration work together as this plan unfolds and comes together, and there's a lot of input on how that's presented. And so, that's what we intend to do, or at least I intend to do, is my role is to ensure that that occurs. I've been a part of a lot of capital projects, and I know a lot of times you do need to start before you have one hundred percent of the commitments in hand, and certainly one hundred percent of the funding in the bank. And so, we got to be mindful of that, respectful, that that's just not how nonprofit projects work, but also in keeping with the operating agreement and just being a good owner of the property and, you know, honest with the zoo and what we would require. So, that just, that can have to be a process, and we don't know what it would look like yet, sitting here.
I guess then, my follow-up would be at least, even if there's our phases being incorporated, especially... for especially an exhibit like this, would a mindset being, at least minimizing the risk of irreparable changes or irreparable changes being made to the site, and mitigating the risk that those happen without the final construction of the exhibit, would that be crucial to your definition of sufficient resources?
Yes. And it'd be critically important to not go down a path where we had part of an exhibit built.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe before you move to your next one, Corporate Counsel can respond to some of that course.
Of course. I would appreciate that.
Sure. In the existing agreement, there's a few sections in Section 5.3, some of, some of the subsections, and they talk about having all of the plans for the entirety of the project submitted to the county. So there's gonna give you the picture of the entire thing as opposed to just site versus building. And then, because it's publicly owned property, there's bonding requirements under state law for, to make sure we don't have a half-completed project or vendors that don't get paid. So there are provisions in the existing documents, and then my office will be right alongside with the administrator and Josh when any big project or any project comes in, if they want us to take a look at the criteria that are in the document.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel. So I do have a few final comments. You know, certainly I am very appreciative of the recent changes to this draft, and now having, by my understanding, the, for the first time, explicit and equitable protections for the remaining green space. I fully understand that those in the neighborhood do not feel that this is either enough green space or that those protections are strong enough or not held in perpetuity, but I do appreciate the fact that this plan has, for the first time, clear and equitable protections that we can hold the zoo accountable for. And I want to thank the work done by my colleagues to get the, those protections in place. I certainly am concerned also by the, the, the lack of trust and how this process has unfolded. I think illustrative of that is that despite the changes that have been made, we have seen a near 200-to-1 ratio in communications of opposition to support. Now, I realize often comments in opposition are always more prevalent than comments for support, whether you're on a planning commission or here on the approving a master plan, but I still maintain that I think it's illustrative of what I see as, as a true breakdown of trust. And I appreciate hearing from my colleagues who will be continuing their service on their board, saying that this is, even though this is a one-in-ten-year master plan, that they are not pushing zoo governance and, and what I see as a true problem to the back burner. And no matter the outcome of this vote, I would encourage my colleagues to take a serious look next year into how the county operates with the zoo, operate, and operates with the community, both culturally and structurally, and how this public asset is managed and governed. I don't know what that looks like, but I do think it is a discussion that needs to occur. So thank you very much for all the work that's been done, and I yield my floor, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So a lot of what I had on my, on my mind to share has already been shared, so I will not go back into that. But I did want to just thank the zoo neighborhood residents for reaching out, their outreach and advocacy as it relates to the master plan. It's clear that the neighbors have a significant stake in the future of the zoo and the neighborhood that they reside in. I also want to reiterate my thanks to the county administration for all the work that's been done to coordinate, facilitate, and advocate for the best possible solution for the zoo and the neighbors based on the options that are on the table today. I must say that I, I really don't like that we just approved paved parking in January, and we're back, you know, again, talking about it in the master plan revision today. Not only was it unexpected, but it was, it seemed, I, I would agree that it's, it's been a bit of a rush process. But I am happy with the, a way that we were able to come together and figure out the best possible solutions in the space that we're in right now and having to vote on, on, on this at the moment. And so, you know, my goal as a commissioner, I'm sure many of my colleagues, is to just strike a balance between the community needs and the needs of the zoo to be able to operate and to be able to expand as much as it can within an urban space. If the zoo were in my neighborhood, you know, in, in a suburban area, it would, it would be different in trying to expand, right? There's not so much limited space, but it's not. And I understand the community's desire not to be another concrete garden that, that doesn't have green space, that families that have spoken today and that we've heard from in emails and, and conversations have, have voiced that desire to have some place to go with their children, with their families, to be able to enjoy green space within, within the city. However, you know, I used to sit on the zoning board of appeals in the city of Kentwood, and it's not a great, it's not the most exciting board to sit on, but it does, it did provide and, and insight, some insights into the rules that we have to follow related to, you know, uses of, of space and property and the rules that we have to follow, as well as trying to balance that with community need. And so with that, I'm just, I, I, I feel like we have to do something to protect the space, and I really feel like this, this, the concessions that were made in this agreement at least provide space that will continue to be green space, will not include cars, that will keep our children safe as they are out there with, playing their games and having family activities and things. And so what brings me peace, too, is that there'll be a road that, you know, will be hard once it's, once it's corrected, once a green space is revitalized and has been prioritized to be revitalized very soon, next year, so that it can continue to be green space. It's gonna be really hard to then do something else to make that a space that is then parked on in the future. And so it's not an optimal plan, it is not something that we asked for, nor did we want to have come forward, but since it's here, my desire, our desire, from those that I've been working with, has been to get the best opportunity for green space for the community. I would just ask the zoo leadership, as it moves forward, you've heard how much the community feels like there's no trust. Moving forward, I would just ask you all to build and solidify trust with the neighborhood residents as you move forward. It's not okay to say one thing and this spring changes upon us as commissioners and the neighbors without proper justification or warning. Although I think this is a better plan than what we received a few weeks ago, as it provides 13 acres of green space that will be space that can be used safely, meaning no cars. It's not the plan the community believes will be the end of the green space encroachments. And so I will be supporting this, but I will not support any other green space encroachments moving forward. This is it. I'm glad that it's in writing, I'm glad that it is clearly listed in the plan as this will be this way and, and, and trees will be, you know, protected and, and that sort of thing, but this has to be it. You've got to figure out another way to expand without taking space away from the neighborhood that has said time and time again that they want space to be able to enjoy, without necessarily entering the zoo itself with the animals, but space that they can use as a park, as a, as a, as a safe space with their families from now on, on into the future. And so again, I know we can't protect it in perpetuity through the master plan, but again, you've heard there's other documents, there's the operating plan, there's the millage, there's all sorts of ways that we can continue this conversation, and I hope, and I, I, I would implore leadership to consider neighbors and engage them in those decisions that impact their community. It does matter to them, it does matter to the zoo to, to have, to be within a community that accepts what you're trying to do and the, and the changes that you're trying to make, in a way that doesn't make it, make it so that they wish they'd never had moved in that area. And so we won't be able to make everyone happy, it's just not possible. But I do think that we can listen and we can be transparent and truthful in conversations about what our plans are. And so that's what I hope moving forward, and I yield.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to begin by thanking Vice Chair McLeod. I think the concessions over the last 48 hours demonstrate how when we choose to fight for as much as we can get, as much as we can get, some movement and some changes can happen, and I'd like my colleagues in our caucus to remember that, especially if they're going to remain on this board. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the things that have been said over the last two years. I do only have one question, and it's for Corporate Counsel, how, if I may. Some of members of the community brought up the millage, I believe, 2016 millage, and the, and the wording around that millage and where that money is going. Given that, are we opening ourselves up as a county to liability if somebody decided to take legal action because of that public money and how it's being spent?
The use of the money is limited by the language that was on the ballot. The ballot language is referred to when this board allocates the use of the money as it comes in. And so if there's an issue with regard to a particular intended expenditure, we can look at that particular expenditure at that time to make sure it is or is not within the ballot language.
Thank you. I've got to say, on my time on this board, I have not seen the level of incompetence around the zoo anywhere else in the county. As a matter of fact, I haven't seen incompetence anywhere in the county except for the zoo. And I believe that if the governance structure was changed and if leadership at the zoo was more directly responsible to Al and therefore us or the people on this board, we wouldn't have ever gotten to this place. More importantly, or at least as importantly, I believe we've gotten to the point where we, as a county and as a community, need to decide whether or not the zoo should remain where it is. We're talking about building an aquarium after 2031 when the DeVos Place funds are paid off. Over the last two years, there's been plenty of misdirection, plenty of confusion, if you wanna call it that, around the zoo. I think there's plenty of finger pointing to go around all over the place if you wanna do that. I don't think that serves us, though. And so if it were up to me, if I had the power, I would put a question to the voters, I would spend a year at least explaining the situation, where we're at, the fact that the zoo has outgrown its boundaries, the fact that it's affecting the neighborhood as it is, and I would ask the question simply, given the fact that the zoo is trying to expand, and that an aquarium wants to be, is trying to come into fruition, should the zoo remain where it is? I have belief that if we explained all of that to the voters, the voters would make the right decision in saying, no, the zoo should not remain where it is, and it should be put somewhere else in the county. I do not have that power, but I would ask my colleagues who will be on this board after the new year, whether or not that's something that they want to consider. With that being said, I told my colleagues that although I was very, very hesitant to do so, I would be, I would consider voting in favor of this plan if a change in the governance structure was put into writing and at least the process started. That's not what's happening today. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to table this resolution until after the new year, so that the new board can decide whether or not this master plan meets the needs of the neighborhood and the community, and whether or not some bigger, long-term changes need to happen.
Okay. Motion from the floor to table. It would require a second. I do not see a second.
Second.
You will, you will second it? Okay.
To be clear, I'm not tabling to a certain date, just tabling.
What did you say?
I'm not tabling to a certain date, or whatever the language is.
Oh, uncertain. Okay. So it is a motion to table supported, it is a motion that is tabled indefinitely, which means it is debatable. Anyone wish to address the motion to table? If not... You may.
And I, I don't wanna be rude or talk across out of term, but what will tabling this do for us?
We don't get to go back and forth, but I hear and understand the frustration and the question. Yes. All right. Yes, Mr. Wooden.
Just to clarify, though, by, a motion to table this measure would require a motion of this body to take it from the table. It is not going to be, it will not be on, automatically inserted on any agenda, the chair cannot decide to place it on a, a new agenda. It would require the bo, this body in the new term to vote to take it from the table.
I believe the board chair can put it back on an agenda.
Okay. Okay. But ultimately, it's still an indefinite tabling, which would require an action of the board, whether by the officer or the board itself, to take it from the table. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pakla.
And just one more point of clarification. A motion to table requires that the identical agenda item be taken up once it is on table. Is that correct?
We pick it right up where we are now.
So any notion that we could potentially change the governance structure as part of this agenda item is not possible, because the exact same agenda item would have to come to that board, should it be taken up in the future.
I mean, it would simply come back where we are now. If there's other issues that get raised at that point, governance is not in the current motion. Governance is in conversation, but it's not in the motion.
And just one more question on that. Governance is part of the operating agreement, which is something that the board could take up next year, separate from this particular agenda item.
If I was chair, I would say it will be taken up, but you'll have to take that up with my successor.
I understand. Thank you so much.
All right. I'll call for a voice vote on this. All those that support the motion to table say yes.
Point of order, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to table indefinitely, Resolution 132, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Breevy, Boujat, Burl, DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Hennessy, Hildembrand, Coleman, LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla, Ponstine, Sparks, Teal, Wooden.
No.
Chair Stuck.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have eight, you have zero na, you're zero yays, 18...
Can't be. We had one yay, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, you have one yay, one abstain, and 18 nays. The motion fails. The, the 132 resolution is not tabled.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Chair, I'd like to request a roll call vote on the underlying motion.
Okay. By the way, your record on Robert's Rules stands? All right. Any other comments? Before we get to you, because you're a second, I believe.
First?
Oh. You sure about that? All right. Mr. Antor.
Thank you, Chair. You know, when dealing with public issues like this, there was, I don't know who said it, but they said that if you ever wanna fail, absolutely fail on something, it's try to make everybody happy. It's, it's almost impossible, and it's been brought out by several commissioners here that, you know, we can't make everybody happy. So I think the best we can do is put the best good faith forward on both sides, and I've seen that from both sides, and I've heard from a lot of people on this, and I was progressively in opposition to this because I thought there was some more room to negotiate, and I think that's been done. Stan and Al, I know you've gone to great lengths to meet with the neighbors, and you did so in good faith. And so I'm, I'm always one of the ones that's a little pessimistic sometimes on these things and making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but I think we've done about as good as we can. So I appreciate the effort. And one thing I'd like to point out is, this body has invested literally millions and millions of dollars in acquiring parkland and green space, and most of that, most of our constituents have to travel to, you know, but it's there, but the thing is, we gotta get there. And it is nice having a neighborhood park, and I understand that about John, John Ball. And I appreciate the fact that the land that they are preserving is contiguous, for the most part, and there was an effort there. So like I say, we can't make everybody happy, but I will be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Pakla.
Oh, yeah, I got that.
I had my questions, so now this is my commentary. So I just wanted to express appreciation for all of the voices we heard today. I think it's a really important aspect of the work that we do for our community members to come out. I counted 278 emails are the emails that we received over the last few days. So I, I really appreciate the opportunity that folks have to make their voice. So I really appreciate the opportunity that folks have to make their voices heard and to take time out of their busy schedule. I also want to express appreciation for the county administration and the great work that has happened in that conversation between the zoo and the neighbors and the board. You know, I think we are seeing time and time again that we have a very capable administration that is capable of balancing lots of different aspects of our, of our work. Finally, I want to express appreciation for Minority Vice Chair McLeod and for Chair Stack for the countless hours that you all spent advocating and making the concessions and the changes that were ultimately here to protect more green space and to protect trees. I agree with others that it's unfortunate that we got to the point where the relationship between the zoo, the neighbors, the community, and the county is so contentious. I mean, the notion that the county was bullying anybody into paving over the entire green space is just ludicrous. And I think the ludicrous nature of that claim and the toxic nature of the relationship as it's been in the past has to be recognized. I love the zoo. I got married at the zoo. I, we are annual members of the zoo, but it's important to recognize how important relationship building and maintenance of those relationships is for an entity like the zoo. That said, the vast majority of the master plan that we see in front of us is full of amazing ideas for a vibrant zoo that's a great resource for our community and beyond. I'm grateful for the many hours spent by zoo staff to put it together and the consultants that brainstormed and invoked the vision. But as Commissioner Hennessy alluded to, unfortunately, we're not really talking about that today. We're talking about parking. When I look at the parking proposal, I've, I've really sort of distilled it down to three priorities, and those priorities are to reduce the possibility of vehicle pedestrian conflicts, to increase the usable green space and to protect that green space, and to save as many trees as possible. And we heard, we heard this morning that many of those that are urging a no vote are specifically focused on preserving that green space. You know, I recall in October, there were a number of Facebook posts from neighbors and the users of the zoo property that showcased that particular pedestrian vehicle conflict in its starkest form. Videos of cars that were driving through soccer practice, moving videos of children rightfully claiming that cars and people don't mix. These are really true and very important things for us to realize, and the only way to truly separate cars from people is to create that physical boundary. The result of the current plan would be that we would fall back on the current situat, the result of failing to, to accept the current plan would be that we would fall back on the situation that is currently there and that we see with those conflicts. Ultimately, the plan in front of us does more for those three focus areas than the current approved parking plan can do. That, the current setup is unsafe and unsustainable. Sharing the spa, park space with people is, is unsafe. We've heard that we can't enforce the zoo not parking on that space. We've heard that that is not within our power and that it has always been an expectation. We heard that that was not something that happened when we approved the January amendment. And we also heard that the public wants us to hold the zoo accountable to protect that green space. So when I look at this plan, this plan does create a physical barrier, which separates the parkland from the parking lot. This plan clearly articulates and provides a concrete timeline for both the immediate and the eventual use of that parkland to be protected. 225 feet immediately, at least 375 feet in the future. We heard from Josh, it could be more as we have those conversations. For reference, currently, it is paved to about 540 feet. This is my GIS wonk in me. And people park as close to 200 feet relative to valley, so that's a, that's an immense savings that we have. Finally, you know, just recently, we saw that this new plan creates strong protections for the historic and important grove of trees that the community has focused on. None of these concessions would have been possible without the neighbors, and I want to again express appreciation for all of those voices that we heard because had we not recognized how important those concessions were, we would still be at 300 feet, maybe 150 feet, right? But, but this board has time and time again, over the course of the last year, pushed back and held the zoo accountable to its promises. And in my estimation, this master plan today is the next step in repairing that relationship, holding the zoo accountable. For a long time, we've heard the need to protect the park, to protect the trees, to allow our kids to play. This plan does those things better than our current setup does. If we don't approve this plan, it does, we will not have those protections in place. For these reasons, I'm inclined to support it, but I agree with Minority Vice Chair McLeod that this is not the end of us holding the zoo accountable. We will continue to hold the zoo accountable to those relationships. We have the operating agreement, which is on the table in the future. We have lots of opportunity for this board to continue to make sure that promises are being upheld to the neighbors and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't want to say anything because in lieu of time, but, but I feel like I have to. During adversity, that's when leaders rise. So I'm looking at Amy Henman, looking at Tina Iker, I don't know if she's out there, and I'm looking at the West Side. And you have shown why the West Side is the best side. You have been strategic. You have fought. You have fought gracefully and been heard, but also spoke up and out. So we want to let you know that we appreciate you and we hear you and we see you, and because of you, the changes are being made, and that's what you really want. You want to make sure that the changes are being made because you did not appreciate where everything was going with the zoo. And we appreciate you. We know it's not the answer that you were looking for, but you did create change. So I'm thankful for you for that. And Peter, I believe that you want the best for the zoo.
You're talking to me, of course, yes.
Chair, I believe Peter wants the best for the zoo. And we have to find a way to work together because the people that live, play, work there, our zoo is one of our shining stars of Kent County. So we just have to figure out more of the pieces of the puzzle, and as you grow, that's what happens. So Kent County, we're growing, we love growing, but there are headaches that go along with that growth as well. So I'd like to say thank you to the West Siders for their intentionality and thoughtfulness and working together.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Now, this is your second one. All right. Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious. Al, do you know, in all this, is there such a thing as a general contractor that's going to be overseeing the construction aspects of this, or is this more of a piecemeal? It's more piecemeal. I mean, this is going to happen over 10 years. Okay, so we're, we're confident with the, with the folks that we have coming and doing all this work? I was just wondering if there's any type of assurity bond or anything in case we...
Yes, there is. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, with that, if you'll allow me, just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to acknowledge the community for your advocacy. I join my colleagues in expressing inspiration in how significant and intelligent and consistent that has been. I also want to acknowledge my colleagues here who who bring us back to the fact that this is a 40-page document. And it is, I think, an inspiring vision for what a first-class zoo can be. And it is the kind of vision, I think, that the voters of this county were looking for when they approved this millage. So hats off to the zoo and all of the effort in putting that together. Unfortunately, most of our attention is on one half of page 11, and so rightly or wrongly, it compels us to be focused on that. And in that regard, it sort of brings to focus the, the inherent tension between operating a first-class zoo on a fixed tract of land in an urban setting and a surrounding urban area. I think all of my colleagues here want to be good stewards of that zoo. We want our zoo to be a first-class, top-quality zoo. I think that all of my colleagues also want to be good neighbors. We want to be good neighbors to the John Ball neighborhood area and to the all West Side, some of which I represent. So thank you for your comments about being the best side. But we have an inherent tension, and I think the seeds for that, that tension go back to when the county first became part of this process, back in 87, when a contract between the city and the county and a deed from one to the other specifically created an environment where there was a set-aside zone for safe space, 150 feet, and the rest of it designated for zoological use. That is a conflict that carries with us today. Now, I know that, because I sometimes read social media chatter, and I know that there has been a lot of conversation out there that suggested that I have held to a position, I think a legal position, sorry about that, that given that, there simply could be no open space within that zoo zone. And if I said that, you should have corrected me because I'm wrong. I don't think I said that. I think I'm holding now and have always held that. If open space is an appropriate use of that space as a zoo, then we should do it. And as far as I knew, the zoo recognizes that it is an urban zoo, and open space is an inherent need as part of this zoo footprint. So the question is, how big should that open space be? What should be the uses in that open space? And we're talking about the space outside the 150-foot buffer. There's no question, the 150-foot buffer is legally deed-restricted. It cannot be used for that zoological use. So here we are. We're trying to reach a balance, and it is a balance that on the one hand, we say, what do we need to do to still let that zoo be successful, the way we want it to be successful, and still be good neighbors? Where is that? Well, there's no clear answer to that, and that's why this has been such a difficult conversation in going back. How do we find that balance? The balance we have here is, I, because I've been in some of the conversations, this is not the balance the zoo would have asked for. To get here, they had to stretch, and thank you for stretching. To get here, the neighbors would have to stretch to find it acceptable. So if we asked everybody to write, what should it look like, I don't think anybody would come back with this. I said that about the Harpa solution. The same thing is true here. This is an attempt to find a balance. I think it is a fair balance of the competing needs and competing desires here. Is it the end of the game? No. I think we said here that we're going to put this at a minimum of 375 feet of open space, and to the extent that the zoo's use can allow for a greater, you have the flexibility to do that. And I think this board is encouraging that to be continued, to be looked at. To the extent we can protect these trees, we definitely want these trees protected, if at all possible. So I think we're sending the right message. I think this is a fair balance of those competing needs. I agree with my colleagues that said, we're never going to make everybody happy with this. We do the best we can with what we have to find a balance that we think has integrity. I think this does it, and I'm going to support it. With that, there was a call for a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 132, Commissioners Antor,
Yes.
Baker, Breevy, Boujack, Burl,
Yes.
DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Coleman,
Yes.
LeGrand,
Yes.
McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla,
Yes.
Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden,
Yes.
Chair Stack,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yays, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passed.
I think we had three nays.
Sorry, three nays. Yes.
You need to get a bigger piece of paper.
16 yays, three nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 132 is adopted.
All right, thank you very much. I hesitate to do this, but we've been going for quite a while. We still have seven resolutions to deal with, so is that acceptable if we take a five-minute, six-max stretch break and come back here to finish up our agenda? I know that we knew this was going to be long. We did order lunch, I believe. So hang on, be back in six minutes, please. We're past the six-minute mark, so let us reconvene and continue on with our agenda, which is in the resolutions, and for the next motion, I will call on Commissioner Woodman.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 134 of today's date, the 2025 Management Pay Plan Range and Wage Changes. It comes to us from Human Resources.
Is there support, supported by Commissioner Boujack? Questions or comments on this one? I don't see any, so this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 134, Commissioners Antor, Baker, Breevy,
Yes.
Boujack, Burl,
Yes.
DeBoer, Diaz, Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy, Hildenbrand, Coleman,
Yes.
LeGrand, McLeod, Merchant, Oliver King, Pakla,
Yes.
Ponstein, Sparks, Teal, Wooden,
Yes.
Chair Stack,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 134 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item D, and I will call on Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 135 of today's date, the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority Agreement with ASM Global, coming from the Administrator's Office.
Supported by Commissioner Burl. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I was hoping that I could speak to both D and E, if that's allowed?
Or if you speak to D, I'll presume that you've covered E.
Okay, that works. I had one main question. I did watch the Finance Committee, so I'm not going to repeat those questions. But I'm curious, the question's for you, Al. What was your, the process for how this came to the board? Is this something that you were, and the Administrator's Office was involved in from the beginning and worked on together and then came here with CAA? Or was this done at the CAA and then brought to us?
It was done at the CAA and brought to us with the exception that we've been part of developing the financial stack for the amphitheater project and the soccer stadium from the beginning. So we've been involved for two and a half years, so certainly there's provisions in the agreement that we have discussed, but as far as us being at the table and actually negotiating it, no, that isn't how that happened.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Again, I'm not going to repeat some of the things that were said at Finance. I think some of my colleagues around this board asked very clear questions, and we got somewhat clear responses back. I will say that I'm extremely concerned with the fact that, if I'm not mistaken, both D and E came to the board without there being some kind of bidding process. And especially considering the fact that the Live Nation is being sued by the Department of Justice for being a monopoly. There's a Department of Justice release from May of this year that says, in part, "We allege that Live Nation relies on unlawful anti-competitive conduct, exercises monopolistic control over the live events industry in the United States at the cost of fans, artists, smaller promoters, and venue operators. The result is that fans pay more in fees, artists have fewer opportunities to play concerts, smaller promoters get squeezed out, and venues have fewer real choices for ticketing services. It is time to break up Live Nation Ticketmaster." I don't believe that these, I don't believe that for sure, Live Nation, that our Resolution E is in the best interest and the public interests of the people of Kent County, and I have many concerns with Resolution D, not only the fact that it did not go through a bidding process, but also that these resolutions, these agreements are decades long. And so I'd like to make a motion to table both D and E, if that's allowed, and if not, then individually.
A motion to table D and E would be out of order.
Then I'd make a motion to table D.
All right, is there support for that motion?
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to request...
I probably have to say there was not a second, therefore it was not...
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to request a roll call on D, E, and F. If that's not allowed, then I will speak up just to request one for each individual one, but I'm not going to repeat my comments. Thank you.
I'll take that as a request for a roll call on the current motion. Further discussion on the current motion. Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. At risk of extending the term of my five colleagues who are departing after this meeting, I'll keep my comments brief. I, I think that having studied this a bit...
I, I think that having studied this a bit and delved into it and financed it more depth, the logic of these contracts and agreements and the contributions to the capital stack makes sense from a business perspective. But I just, as a government organization, I just feel like we should always have an open bid process on substantial contracts. So I'll be opposed.
Anyone else? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Stack. I agree with Commissioner Coleman. These long-term no-bid contracts, they're really, I think the optics aren't good. That's a, you know, potentially 25 years. And, you know, I don't care if people in the private sector want to have no bids and maybe they have select vendors they use. But I think in the public sector, we have to be conscious of the fact that this isn't our money, and we have to get the best deal we can. I'm not saying that's not happening, but that length of the term with no bids or bidding, I think is not in our best interest, and it's not a good optic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner DeWort.
Thank you, Chair. Can we get a little bit of background on why additional bids weren't considered? Or getting additional bids?
Mr. Rick Nguyen is here from the CAA to respond.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me.
Oh, we got a minute yet, I think.
Oh, okay. So there's really maybe three or four reasons. A major reason was the success that we've had with ASM over the last 20-some years. Another reason, we didn't really, I don't think it's prudent for, for the city and the venues to take a chance on losing the existing ASM staff, which would be Rich and Chris and those that have performed so well. There were, at the time we started the negotiations, there were several years left on the existing contract. And we didn't want to bifurcate the venues and have someone managing the three existing and someone opening the two new venues, which I forgot to mention at Finance. So I apologize. But that, that was another reason. However, we did use this as a major bargaining chip or negotiation chip with ASM, saying, if you don't, if we don't come to a, an agreement that's a win-win, then we're going to have to go up to bid. So I think we did get a really good agreement with them, and that, those are the reasons.
I think Commissioner Pakla was next.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so building off of that, you said the current contract with ASM had not yet expired. Can you, do you have, with the date of that expiration, off the, like, a few years from now?
Yeah, I believe it would be '27 or '28.
Okay. And then, just as a point of clarity, this action item is specifically to extend that contract? Or is it just to? Is it to both extend that contract and to include the new venues? Or is it just to include the new venues?
It's both.
Both? Okay. So this is, this would supersede any previous contracts that we have?
Correct.
Okay. And then, final question is, do you have a ballpark estimate of the number of potential operators that exist that could have gone up to bid for this?
There's probably one, really one other major qualified. ASM is probably the, operates more soccer stadiums than anybody else, so that's a plus. But, and then, you know, there might be one other that could do the entire five venues.
Great, thank you. All right. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm going to support this. I feel differently about the next one, but I, I have to respect that the work that ASM and its staff has done to become a part of this community and to support the expansion of the community and the institutions. And lots of arenas, not just, not just the specific work that they do. So I'll be supporting this.
All right. No one, oh, Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. My question is more for legal counsel, in that we don't have, you know, the specific agreements, and I don't necessarily need to see that whole long agreements for both this and the next proposal. But are there outs in case of, you know, incompetence, fraud? You know, are there other outs available?
Well, keep in mind, Commissioner, this is a contract between CAA and these vendors?
Okay.
Not the county. We're, we're here because our, the CAA's operating documents require this board and the City Council to approve any contracts over five years. But, but we are not-
That doesn't make us a contracting party.
We're not a signatory to the contracts.
So this, does the, do the contracts themselves allow outs? I mean, this is long periods of time. So I assume that, you know, if, if an organization fails in some way, in its fiduciary responsibility as, as a business, that they're, that the CAA then would, would have a way to-
The answer's yes.
The answer's yes.
Yeah. We do have outs.
There are provisions for lack of performance, you know, as in any contract. So there's cure periods, but ultimately, we do have, we do have cancellation options.
And this wouldn't change that. If there's a failure to perform, the CAA would have the right and entitlement to go ahead and terminate.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Just one more.
Sorry, Chair. That kind of entered, the last comment made me wonder about this. I think our legal counsel said any agreement over five years requires sign-off by both Finance and-
Approval.
So-
Wait, wait, no. Requires approval of the City Commission of Grand Rapids and the County Commission.
Our County Commission. So part of this is going from a 15-year with a built-in 10-year extension. A 10 years exceeds five years. And in such, shouldn't we have avoided that apple as well?
Well, the current proposal is that that 10-year renewal possibility is at the discretion of a lead CAA and ASM. So our approval will grant them the ability to exercise that.
Okay.
Am I right about that, Rick?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to see that tweaked a little bit, but I'm fine with your answer. Thank you.
All right. If nothing else, I mean, I would just say that I, I hear the concerns. I would share those concerns, but for the fact that we have lots of years of experience with this provider and good experience. And so it's not like we're going out looking for somebody out of the blue. We know them and are satisfied with them. And clearly, these contracts continue to hold our rights to terminate if they don't perform. So, all right. You called for a roll call, did you not? So, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 135, Commissioners Antor.
No.
Baker. Breevy. Boujack. Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz. Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman. LeGrand. McLeod. Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Teal. Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 14 yays, three nays. The motion passes. Resolution 135 is adopted.
Thank you. For the next item, I will again call on Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 136 of today's date, the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority Agreement with Live Nation, coming to us from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Burl. Questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. I guess my question would be, in the process that the CAA used, how is it that Live Nation became the candidate of choice? I think Live Nation is under contract with us and has been for-
Yeah, similarly to ASM. I mean, we, Live Nation's been promoting the arena for-
Since the beginning.
Probably the major promoter of all acts in the arena for 20-some years. So that's primarily the reason. I mean, and we have really, you know, notwithstanding the Department of Justice, we've had a good relationship with Live Nation. They have performed well. And, you know, I, I think the, we have legal paragraphs as well for their performance. So depending on what happens, which, as in Finance, the, our legal attorney, as it's going to take years to find out if what they're claiming is true. So, but we do have clauses there for non-performance. So if anything happens where they can't perform up to the contract, we have an out as well.
Including depending upon what remedy, if any-
Yeah.
-of the government ultimately obtains in that litigation. Now, the other point is, when would be the capital contributions under this?
We get 10 upon signing, or within three or four days of signing. The balance is paid pretty much before we open, as it pertains to the FFME that's required for the amphitheater.
So within a number of years?
Within, well, we opened in '26.
Two years.
Yeah.
So if there's a breakup as a consequence of that antitrust litigation, that's well after the contributions?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? You've already commented, Commissioner Diaz. Well, the rules say you may. Commissioner Antor.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to point out that Ticketmaster is a subsidiary of Live Nation. So the appearance of a monopoly does exist, obviously, because there's a lot of ticketing agencies out there. And I've always thought Ticketmaster's kind of fallen off a little bit in their performance. But I think we're locked into potentially a, an agency that's not quite up to speed, because they don't have to be, because the market isn't really speaking there. And then my only other question, Rick, we talked about this a little bit, and I, I didn't mean to beat you up at the Finance meeting, that's not my intention, in here too. But I wanted some clarity on the preferred promoters. I know you have not, nothing is exclusive, but you do have a preferred promoter. And I was just wondering, if you can, and maybe you can't, what that details? As far as if I'm coming in and I just want to put on an event, would you allow me, Tom Antor, to do an event? And what would I have to sign to do that? Is there any preferred promoter language in kind of an outsider coming in?
I think you'd work with ASM. So you'd work with Rich and his team. And if it made sense for the venue, then there's, there is a clause within the agreement that Live Nation must allow other promoters to promote if it, if it's in the best interest of the venue. So anything we decide between Live Nation and, in this case, ASM or the CAA, it must be in the best interest of the venue.
And preferred promoter, then, would be someone that you deem to be preferred and in the best interest of?
Right.
And I think we talked a little bit about, back in the day when there was a lawsuit. Did that provision go away, where if you were preferred and you went to use a different venue outside of your scope, was there a requirement?
Oh, yeah.
That's gone.
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I understand now.
Okay. All right. Nothing else? This is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 136, Commissioners Antor. Baker. Breevy. Boujack. Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz. Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman. LeGrand. McLeod. Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
No.
Ponstein. Sparks. Teal. Wooden.
No.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eight yays, seven nays. The motion passes. Resolution 136 is adopted.
How many yays? I had nine. Nine, 10.
Just tell us what the tally is.
I have 10 yays, 7 nays.
10 yeses and 7 no's. It passes.
No, I got it. It's good.
All right. All right. Next item. I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 137 of today's date, the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority Property Acquisition for the Amway Stadium, from the Administrator's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this one? This is one that requires both the city and the county to approve the action. Yes, Commissioner Diaz.
I'd like to request a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 137, Commissioners Antor. Baker. Breevy. Boujack. Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz. Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. McLeod. Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Teal. Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, 2 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 137 is adopted.
All right. Thank you. I'll now move to item G, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I move, I move that Resolution 138 of today's date, City of Grand Rapids' contribution to support the West Michigan Welcome Plan and Global Gathering Event Funds, brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this one? This is a voice vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. It passes. I beat you this time. All right. Lest I get smug, let's move to the next one. Commissioner Sparks, I will call on you again.
I'd like to move Resolution 139 of today's date, the Emergency Management Performance Grant to Enhance Emergency Management Program Within the State of Michigan from the Sheriff's Office.
Is there support? Support. Supported by Commissioner Antor. Questions or comments on this one? I don't. Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
I would just be remiss if I passed up an opportunity to express appreciation for bringing in additional grant dollars to the county, something that we do very well.
Very good. Anyone else? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. All right. For next, and I think last item on the resolutions, I will call on Vice Chair Green.[1725.18]
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the adoption of Resolution 140 of today's date, Board of Commissioners 25 Strategic Plan from the Admin Office.
Is there support? Approved by Commissioner Pakla. Questions or comments on this one? Yes, Commissioner Pakla?
Just another note of appreciation for the process here, I think, having come together in the Warner North Cross Building for the event that we did and the work that happened afterwards, I think we have a really quality document here that's going to guide our work in the future, so.
Very good. I think we concur on that. All right, nothing else? This is a voice vote. All those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. Great. Brings us to the end of our resolutions. Next item is the second opportunity for public comment. If anyone here wishes to address us from the public on our general jurisdiction matters, please identify yourself by name, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you again, Chairman. Steck? Daniel Scut, still. I just wanted to take this opportunity, we just had our national holiday, Thanksgiving. The scriptures say that every day is Thanksgiving, if we are a thankful people. I want to thank especially the almighty Lord God for giving us life and breath, all of us here, and for the Lord Jesus Christ, His only begotten Son, for dying on the cross for our sins, and all, giving us all an opportunity to spend eternity with Him. I want to thank each one of you. I know some of you and I, we have differences, but I still, over the many years, have observed that each one of you, I think, really care for your constituents. And I appreciate that, because we all live together here in Kent County. And I know that you are concerned about your citizens, I just wish that perhaps we were more concerned about the citizens of the unborn. For those of you leaving, the Commission, Commissioners Diaz, Wooden, Breevy and Baker, I just want to say that I wish the best for wherever your paths take you. But I did want to especially thank Commissioner Antor. Through these years, and I understand 16 years you've served the county here, excellent service to all of Kent County. I don't live in your jurisdiction, but through these years I've been coming here, we've formed a friendship, and I'll personally miss you here at these meetings. But I hope we can develop and keep this relationship going even outside of these chambers. And I just wish, may the almighty Lord God bless you in all the paths He takes you down. Last time I was here, we had the Director of the Kent County Health Department here, I forget his name, but he assured me out in the foyer that, again, they encourage no women to have a baby murdered. So I just want to thank the Health Department for that strong stand, and we will see you soon, the Lord willing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment? I don't see anyone else. In a 20 after 12, it doesn't surprise me. All right, that will bring us to our next item, an Administrator's report.
I will defer to the week-end review tomorrow.
Well done. All right.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Pardon?
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It came to my attention after thinking about the final vote on Resolution 136, 10 members having voted, and this measure being the final passage requiring a majority of members present, since I was a no vote and thus on, and there being only 10 votes, the no's technically were the prevailing side in that matter, I am going to take my own ability to file a motion to reconsider under Rule 3 dot 13, which allows for a member who is on the prevailing side to move to reconsider, and if there are at least as many members present as when the original vote was taken.
So you are moving for reconsideration?
Of 136.
136, which is the Live Nation contract.
Correct.
And you're doing that because you believe you were part of the winning?
Because ultimately, since there weren't 11 votes, the prevailing side was the side that voted not to pass it. And I...
You'd have to challenge, I think we've already ruled that that motion passed.
If it is the ruling of the chair that that motion passed, then I will remove my motion, I just simply want to make sure that we are dotting all our Ts and crossing all of our Is. Candidly, I shared the concerning concerns with hiring Live Nation, but certainly wouldn't want that to jeopardize the full process of finalizing the execution of these projects.
Okay. I think I declared that the motion passed.
Yes.
All right. Now I think we're up to reports. Any reports? I have one report on the agenda. Anyone else have a report? I see not. The one report I have is that we had appointed a Procurement Policy Advisory Committee under Rule 6. That committee did meet and did generate a report. I have reviewed that report and determined that it is compliant with the charge, and also that the recommendations of that committee are accepted. And to the extent that it is a recommendation to address alternative procedures in the bidding process, I am directing that to the Administrator for follow-up and report back at such time as is appropriate.
Will do.
All right, any other reports? If not, that brings us to miscellaneous. Report?
It could bleed into miscellaneous, but just reporting that, as you know, I need to take the oath of office prior to January 1st, as I begin my term in the House, to do so, I must resign from this position, though this is our last meeting, to avoid any conflicting offices when I take the oath of office in December, or this month. Thus, I tendered my letter of resignation to the Chair effective next Friday, December 13th at 5:00 PM, and the Chair has accepted it.
I will agree, that's the case. Are you saying that if I didn't sign it, you couldn't become a statement?
You know, if...
Just wondering. All right. That probably takes us into miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Boujack?
Thank you, Chair. Up to the outgoing Commissioners, just want to thank you for the opportunity of dialogue, and I appreciate all of you and your willingness to serve. I know, just having known you and been around, that I've grown personally, and just wanted to say thank you, and I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Did I, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair Steck. Though this meeting has already gone on quite long, I hope my colleagues will permit me at least a few moments to offer my thanks and appreciation after serving in this role for the last six years. First, I certainly would like to thank the voters of the 18th District for electing me to this position for three terms. It's been an honor, and I look forward to continuing my service in the Michigan House of Representatives. Certainly would also like to thank my amazing family, particularly my wife Adeline, my parents and in-laws, and my son Samuel, for sharing me with this body and our county. You know, they say nothing changes you quite like becoming a parent, and becoming a parent while serving as Commissioner definitely did that and shaped the way I serve the public and the approach I bring to public service. Second, I would like to lift up our amazing county administrator, his team, and our amazing staff. You know, like many, I began my service on this commission firmly believing things needed to change, and thus a suspicion of those in our administration or our board leadership. But after seeing this administration and my colleagues and all these dedicated public servants rise to the occasion after countless crises and transformational opportunities, I can safely say those preconceived notions are gone. We have an amazing team here, and I certainly have become a believer in the Kent County way. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some of the past colleagues whose examples I've tried to instill and emulate. To those who taught me how to be the best Commissioner I can be, Mandy Bolter, Dave Bolkowski, Roger Morgan, Diane Jones and Phil Skaggs, thank you. And at the risk of going on too long, I will acknowledge a handful of our present colleagues, and please know that if I do not mention you by name, I have cherished working with all of you, including Tom. And please know, I do not mean to reduce our relationship down to one point, but things that rang with me as I reflected. Commissioner Pakla, despite doing all I could to support your predecessor two years ago, I cannot help but feel I gained from that loss. You have become a friend, a confidant, and a role model in fatherhood. Thank you. Thank you to Commissioner LeGrand for pushing me to be the leader I could become, and Commissioner Sparks for reminding me I was ready all along. I would not have accomplished a fraction of what was achieved without your help and encouragement. Commissioner Hennessy, you have shown me the importance of blocking off time for phone calls. Really those with you. But ultimately, it has been your tenacity that has stuck with me the most, and even in those rare moments I, we have been on opposing sides, I cannot help but want to root for you. Commissioner Burl, whether we were talking about family, including the time you called to see if Adeline had reached her due date while we were in the delivery room, or watching your son graduate from, I believe, what was basic training on your screen during a meeting, or our discussions about housing, I have cherished our time together, so thank you. Now Vice Chair Green, in our early years on this body, I felt like Chair Bolter and current Chair Steck were trying to act like the friendship equivalent of a yenta by putting us on as many committees and task forces as they could. It was through our conversations on broadband and brownfields and business parks and standing rules that, despite our political differences and our competitive streaks, I found a true friend and kindred spirit, and I wish you the best of luck as you hold the gavel. Now, one of my first discussions with Commissioner Breevy was when she briefly but directly read me the riot act after voting no on an issue. Though I can safely say, ultimately, after six years of being here, I could tell you she was right, and I have come to welcome her direct approach and her friendship. Your political courage, whether it is on this current climate or the actions we've taken on the Board of Public Works, are things that we should all aspire to, and I have truly valued our friendship. Thank you. To Minority Vice Chair McLeod, though she is not here right now, my greatest joy in serving this year has been seeing you.
...I would or care about. Not exactly glamorous, but crucial to understand the way we manage our resources and find ways to make improvements for the health of our community. And then there's the Gerald R. Airford International Airport Authority Board, I can never say that. Serving on that board has been a highlight of my tenure, even if the meeting, you know, meetings from time to time have tempted me to hop on a flight somewhere with a little bit better weather. Seeing the airport grow into a gateway for West Michigan has been rewarding, and it's a testament of what we can achieve through strategic investments and partnerships. I'm hopeful we will have a new air traffic control tower in the near future. Improvements to the Meyer Sports Complex, the future amphitheater, and the addition of a soccer stadium are all exciting projects that will positively impact our region and allow Kent County to shine. To my fellow Commissioners, thank you for the lively debates, the collaboration, and for occasionally agreeing with me. It really made my day when you did. Continue to work across the aisle to serve the county in the best way. Be willing to say yes when you are offered a challenge to serve around a new Board or Committee. And to L. and the incredible staff, your hard work is the engine that keeps Kent County running, even if I'll never figure out how you managed to keep track of so many acronyms. To all the residents of the 10th District in Kent County, thank you for trusting me to represent you. I'll always treasure the memories of this time, especially the ones where everything went according to plan, which, as we all know, is rare in government. Of course, I'm stepping away from public office to enjoy my family, mainly to act as an Uber driver for my middle school boys, and dedicate my summers to the baseball diamonds at the Meyer Sports Complex and the soccer fields all over West Michigan. Also to support my growing business, but I'll miss this group. To my husband Mark and sons Jonah and Micah, along with my parents and in-laws, thank you for always being patient, understanding, and supportive of my passion. I leave this role with a full heart and a deep sense of gratitude. Thank you all, and may God continue to bless Kent County.
Thank you. We had Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to thank you and L. very much for your leadership and always answering my phone calls. And, you know, I truly had no idea my family members would be coming. In fact, when my daughter called me about a week ago, I said, "Please don't come," because I knew it was going to be emotional, and I didn't want them saying something in defense of me that might look funny. But I so much appreciate them, and I love them so much, and I love my wife so much for coming down and sharing those things. I mean, this was probably the hardest meeting I've ever been to, and the best, so. And I'm also so happy that you all now know I've been an equal opportunity agitator, because even my grandkids, when I interview them, which I do, as they grow up, I do interviews, and a lot of times they don't pass muster, and they hear about it. So that's the way I'm wired. And I know I've made some people uncomfortable, maybe asked some tough questions, supported unpopular positions, at least at this level. And, you know, I feel like I'm true to my convictions that have been handed down to me by my parents, and I guess if I had to do it all over again, I wouldn't change a thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Oliver King?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that as a first-term Commissioner, working with all of you has been a pleasure, and I have learned and grown so much by watching you, listening to your debates, and just experiencing our bonding that we do here. I wish I had an opportunity to work with the five of you that are leaving a little while longer, but I'm glad I had the opportunity of meeting you. You brought a smile to my face, and I actually welcomed coming to the meetings. So good luck in your next journey, and again, thank you for being a true committed public servant. I hope I can be like you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that. Everybody is thankful today, so. You know, I was emotional earlier. You know, it's, this is not because, not just because it's the last day of my term on the commission, but it's the last time, last time for 16 and a half years of public office and working on behalf of community. And I believe all of you and myself certainly do this work because we want to make our community better, and that's why we're here. You know, I have to say, I really, it's been great, especially given the climate of our society right now, the polarization to work so closely with people from both parties. I think that today represented a day that we acted as a board and not partisan bickering. We, our votes were all over the place in terms of this. I really want to appreciate this kind of fun corner that we have here from Wally on down. So, and I think that, you know, and I say to my college students, I say to people I meet that, you know, I believe strongly that, you know, Katie and Wally and the other Republicans in the room are working hard together, and that there's not that much of a difference between us. So I really appreciate that, I wouldn't have had that opportunity to work closely hand in hand, not for this. were not for this. And Dan, I really appreciate you reaching out right away and leading the committee. And Stan, I think that you have served as a model for what the Chair should be, and I hope that future Chairs recognize that, and the way that you strongly made sure that everybody was engaged in the work and that it didn't favor partisan position. Al, I also want to recognize Josh in terms of the work. It's been great. I'm glad I got to work with Josh as he came on. You guys are doing great work in the county. And, I mean, when I left the Grand Rapids School Board, I felt a lot lighter because I carried the, I always carried that, those fifteen thousand kids. I will be lighter tomorrow because I'm also not carrying the future of a park or the other, the ways we get rid of our trash. But it's just been amazing to represent the Southeast Side, to do this work, to work with all you guys, and, you know, I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Green.
Thank you. I had prepared some remarks that I'm not going to read because this meeting's in the noon hour, and I want to give time for the people that are leaving. But I'll just say, I'm going to email them to you guys, so you can still hear the nice things I had to say about the people that are leaving. But I want to say to Commissioners Diaz, Wooden, Baker, who am I missing? Breevy, and Antor, of course, thank you for your service. And I wanted to also briefly thank Chair Steck for your services. Chair, leave some big shoes to fill, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future, regardless of whether you're going to be here or not, because I know that those of you that are going away are not going away entirely. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Really quickly, Commissioner or Vice Chair Green, you're right, we're not going away. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff that signed my birthday card. My birthday is this Saturday, and I'm leaving behind my mid-twenties, and I hope that I don't join the Twenty-Something Club, if y'all know what that is. As you all know, there's been a resolution sitting in front of you all all day today. I had four plans to try and move it today. I even told Chair Steck right before the meeting started that I was planning on doing so. But for multiple reasons, I will not be doing so. If I may, I'm going to read two sections of it, and then I'll make a comment, and I'll leave it at that. Whereas driver's licenses and state IDs remain default forms of identification, and lacking a driver's license or state ID makes it much more difficult to raise a family, go to school, contribute to the state economy, and access housing and healthcare. And whereas it is in the collective interest that all of Michigan's residents, that drivers are trained, screened, tested, and made familiar with Michigan driving regulations, and have access to purchasing auto insurance. And of course, this is a reference to the Drive Safe bills that I hope will still make it out of session this year. The other day, I had a thirty-minute-long conversation, at least, with Commissioner Burrow, and it was specifically around a piece of legislation that may or not be making its way through Lansing. And from there, it changed into a conversation around the systems that need to change. And I wasn't surprised, but I was, I guess I was a little bit surprised, but I was mostly grateful that during that conversation, Commissioner Burrow and I agreed on basically everything. And that was on changing the systems that are affecting our communities, so that as those of you who are going to be on this board after the New Year can make, can have more options, and can have more leeway to ensure that the systems that are being changed are in the benefit of our communities. I've been trying to finish Dr. King's last speech that he ever gave. It's called, "I've Been to the Mountain," I believe, and it's almost an hour long, so I haven't been able to finish the whole thing. But he basically begins it by saying that, even if he was born at a different age, whether that was in the age of ancient Egypt or in ancient Greece when the philosophers were alive, or wherever else he may choose, he would choose to have it born at no other time than the time that he was alive. And I share in that sentiment. We're entering some interesting times as we move forward. I think I wouldn't be surprised if all of you already knew what I'm planning to do after this term. And in the spirit of, again, collaboration, I am the youngest, not just because of this, but I am the youngest current person on this board, and I have learned something from each and every single one of you. And when I get back from Mexico, which I'm leaving next week, Saturday, thank God, I will try and make an effort to reach out to every single one of you, because I think that there's still more that I can learn from each single, each and every single one of you, especially as I embark on the journey that I have chosen. Some of you have already said this, but, and I said this more in length at my last LHR meeting, but I hope that you, all of you, remember, regardless of where your next path is, that we share much more in common than the things that divide us. And again, notwithstanding today's votes, I think that is shown and evident in the number of unanimous votes that we took together over the last two years. I think there's even much more in agreement that we share, especially when it comes to the systems that need to change. So, thank you to my family. Thank you to my parents and grandparents who sacrificed a lot so that I could be here today. And thank you to the people of District Twenty and to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Mr. Hennessy.
Thank you. It's always bittersweet when you reach the end of a term of office here, and I listen to the five of you who are leaving us. I listen to the wisdom of all that you, of your thinking, your personal integrity, the values you hold, the leadership you've developed here. I just, and I think we have a lot of ways to go for the people who come in and to helping them learn the ways and to guide them to be as good a Commissioners as you all have been. And so they, you know, and I was thinking too, with our long discussion today, we really did not repeat each other on John Ball. We all brought in our own perspectives. You know, when we look at each other, we're not just simply looking back at a mirror in front of us, because everybody had something different and a different perspective on this issue. And I think that's really what has made this as the commission and has made all of your participation with us really, really strong and important to all of us. And I have to say that it was one person in particular that I started thinking about yesterday as I came across the Henry David Thoreau comment. "If a man does not keep pace with his companions, perhaps it is because he hears a different drummer. Let him step to the music which he hears, however measured or far away." And I think everybody here has heard their own drummer and adhere to those values that are within them. I thank you all for serving and being able to serve with you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
If not, yeah, I do have a couple of things to say. So, first of all, one of the benefits of going till twelve forty...
Is that we all canceled our afternoons already?
Yeah. Those are canceled. Lunch is waiting for us, and I'm officially canceling the meeting on the nineteenth, so we finished all of our business today, so there's no need to come back. That's all the good stuff. Bad stuff is I have about six pages of comments, and look, there's a, there's a text in Proverbs that I always loved, and it was, it goes something like this, that the beginning of something is important, but the end of something is even more important and more defining. And this is the last meeting that I will be Chair of this austere group, and it will be then, as of December thirty-one, the end of my term as Chair. So, I don't want to ruin the ending by going with six pages, so I will just make a few comments if I might. It does seem a bit a cliche to say this, but it just seems like yesterday that we had that monumental three-hour session in which I was first elected, where we went through every rule in the book, and many rules which we will never hear about again, thank goodness, that now led us on, and certainly led me, on this journey that's now been three years. And over that period of time, we have had collectively and individually lots of meetings, more meetings than any one of us can count. We have no idea, and our constituents have no idea, how much meeting has to go on in order for us to sit here and have those nice debates and deliberate and vote. But you all stuck with it, and not only did we do all of those meetings that are more mundane, but we've gone through an incredible series of tough decisions. I mean, I was talking to Al a little bit. It just strikes me that in my tenure of ten years, and maybe yours at fifteen or sixteen, these three years seem like we've dealt with more issues than we have at any other time in the history of, my known history of this board. And we have wrestled with tough issues, and we made some monumental decisions. And while I've had a small part in that, it is principally due to the hard work, the dedication, and the focus on community, not party, not persons, but the community that has allowed us to rule the way that we have and to achieve these kinds of things. I was going to go through them, but Commissioner Breevy, I already covered some of it. I'll just give you a quick list on what we've done and what you guys have done over the course of the last three years. Certainly, those six months of ARPA will be, six months we'll never forget, right? But distributing one hundred and thirty million dollars into this community to make transformational difference is huge, and those differences are ongoing. So, that was one huge thing. Housing revolving loan fund, crisis stabilization unit, as was noted, the Grand River Greenway, the medical examiner facility that, almost done. But we worked and wrestled with and committed to. The facilities plan, which will change things dramatically starting next year. The domestic violence court, a new circuit court judge, a district court judge, the bond review policy. I think you, Commissioner Coleman. The strategic plan we just approved. We're still repairing a Fallsburg dam. The corrections department was significantly enhanced. We've increased the road patrol system. We have wrestled with and now send on to voters senior millage renewal, early childhood renewal, veterans' millage renewal. We've expanded the excise hotel tax. We dealt with an opioid settlement policy for the next few years. Solid waste ordinance, that took some time, huh? We've had a number of airport projects that we've approved, an amphitheater, a soccer stadium. We've redesigned the governance of this board, I think for the first time in at least two decades, maybe longer. We now have created and are moving forward the mobility task force, the childcare task force. We have an indigent defense department now, a brownfield redevelopment authority, Kent County Insurance Authority. We've cut the ribbons on new park headquarters, the Kent County Service Centers up north, the Fleet Service Building, Kent Transfer Station, and we just adopted a new ten-year zoo master plan. That's all I could think of, but I'm sure there's more. So, there's an awful lot of work in there, and frankly, there's nothing easy about this governing of this county, because it's complex, it is convoluted, it is difficult. But you all have proven it can be done, and you did it excellently, with dignity and respect. It has been my great honor to have been elected to serve you through all of those efforts, and allowing me the opportunity to help you make those decisions has been one of my great honors. Thank you to all of you. Thank you to the staff. Thank you, Al, Lori. Look, and some of them are even still here, Mark. Thank you to all, because you really are the folks that make this happen. It looks good up here, but really, nothing happens unless you take what we say and run with it and make it a reality. So, we have excellent, dedicated, hard-working, capable staff that we can all be proud of. And we have a whole body of thousands of employees behind you that also make us all look good. So, also, I have to thank my family. They're not here. They're probably listening online in my dreams. But I thank them. I mean, there's, you all know that. There's so much sacrifice that you have to take on in order to do this, to do it well, and that sacrifice is borne by your family. My wife Cindy puts up with an awful lot, and Reverend Scott, influencer is just not the right word in my family. I listen more. I try to, anyway. So, I leave. I leave proud of what we've been able to accomplish. I leave thankful for what we've done. I leave thankful for the ability to work with all of you and to work with the staff. We are in good hands going forward. I think that this county is going to continue to set the standard across this state for what it is to be an excellent-run county. So, thank you all for that opportunity. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your friendship. And with that, Vice Chair Green may just have one more motion.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I'll move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to Friday, January third, twenty-twenty-five, at eight-thirty AM for an official meeting.
That'd be the call of the clerk, but, no.
Who's county, huh?
Call of the clerk.
Not the clerk, obviously.
That's a friendly amendment, Mr. Chair.
All right, we are adjourned.